Palm Springs Special City Council Meeting and Study Session of May 8, 2023 to Order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
City Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember DeHart.
Here.
Councilmember Hostage.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton. Mayor Protem Bernstein.
Here.
Mayor Garner.
Here.
Five members present.
Fantastic, thank you. So at this time, we will take public testimony. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the City Council on non-public hearing agenda items. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. You're asked to please begin by telling us what item you're speaking of, which I guess at this point is the budget. And there will be general public comment again at the end of the meeting?
Yes.
For non-agenda item topics. The first speaker is David Norgard, followed by Zachary Daniel Stone.
Thank you, Mayor Garner. Good evening. As a member of the Board of Trustees of the Public Library, it has been my privilege to learn of the many educational and recreational offerings that the library offers to the residents of this city. Its programs and collections are an extraordinary community asset, which serves thousands of individuals annually. Personally, I can attest to the high quality of the author's talks and the Palm Springs Speaks series. Yet the library, as you know, is in acute need of updating, expanding, and improving its facilities. The physical fabric of the library is outdated, frankly, and needs substantial investment to realize its full potential for serving the people of this city. As you are aware, our excellent director, Jeanne Kayes, secured support from the state for some of what needs doing, and I am grateful to this council for its commitment to match those funds. But the state grant and the city's match together will still not be all that is necessary to create a library for the 21st century, one of which we can all be proud. The library needs this council's ongoing strong commitment to see this renovation through to its timely and suitable completion. As you proceed with your budget deliberations, I ask for your enthusiastic and steady support for one of our community's greatest assets. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Zachary Daniel Stone, followed by David Friedman.
Sweet. You guys started it too soon. I got gypped by about 10 seconds here. All right, so here's what we got. This is the budget right now, right? Guess what? Everything I'm going to talk about involves the budget. You know why? It's what everything is. So here's what I'm going to do. I'm going to talk about the library real quick. Robert's Rules of Order. I need to know if this is the way this meeting is run or not. So what I did is I went and got the 12th edition today. I checked it out from the library. Noticed something there. There's only one of the 12th edition. There are two of the 11th editions. Why did one of those not go in the book sale this last time? Why? It should have been in the book sale. We should have two of the 12th editions. You guys are going to be behind because I'm going to keep this checked out for the next few weeks. Robert's Rules of Orders in Action. I've also checked it out. It's a real good one. It also includes a lot to do with... No, maybe it's this one. Yeah, it is. No, it's not. It's that one. It's got to do with how virtual meetings are held as well. So I've got some questions on those I'll need some answers on at some point. But anyway, you guys are just left with the one 11 edition. There's two of them, but you know, it's addition behind. Let's see, what else? Forty-six seconds. I've got so much time here. I learned this on the way up here. Your police chief right here, I believe, right? This man does not have his library card yet. He's been here 18 months. I found that out when I came up here. I asked him, I said, I asked him a question because I showed him where I was from and he said, "I don't know it." And I said, "You must not have a library card." And he said, "You're correct." And I went, "Oh, wow. Okay, let me bring this up real quick." Y'all need to get on this man. Eighteen months, he does not have a library card? What is going on here? Great. Look at this. I checked this out as well. It's called New Rules, yep, of Marketing and PR. One way you can do that is show up at public comment. It is amazing. Finally, I want to thank the library for having this book. It's a controversial book. It's called Mapping Time. I do love it. Thank you. I'll be back, of course, later.
Next speaker is David Friedman, followed by Darrell Terrill.
Mayor Garner, Mayor Protem Bernstein, and council members, my name is David Friedman, and I'm speaking to you in my capacity as interim chair of the Sustainability Commission on two proposed budget expenditures that we considered at the commission. First, the allocation in the current fiscal year for turf conversion has been greatly successful. The city provided a total of $550,000 in matching funds, which is partially funded a total of 437,344 square feet in the 154 approved applications. These projects will lead to savings of approximately 27 million gallons per year and nearly $83,000 per year in cost savings based on current desert water agency rates. However, the city's matching funds were fully subscribed in the day they were made available. The Sustainability Commission supports the additional funding proposed in the fiscal year 2324 budget, including reserved funding for low-income property owners. The commission also supports the proposed funding of the city's transition of its fleet replacement to EV-only. This transition is required by the Advanced Clean Fleets Regulation that the California Air Resources Board adopted on April 28. Starting January 1, 2024, 50% of the total number of vehicle additions to the fleet in each calendar year must be EVs. Starting January 1, 2027, 100% of the total number of vehicle additions to the fleet in each calendar year must also be EVs. In addition to the new CARB regulation, the transition to EVs is required by the city's environmentally preferred purchasing policy that you adopted on March 23 following the Sustainability Commission's recommendation. The policy provides that when replacing vehicles, the city of Palm Springs shall lease or purchase EVs where EV models are available that are suitable for each task. The Sustainability Commission asks that you include staff for post-funding in these items in the budget.
Next speaker is Darrell Terrill.
My name is Darrell Terrill. I know it's too late to introduce a new framework in constructing a budget. I hope in the next fiscal year that you guys consider priority-based budgeting. It has been recognized by the International City County Management Association as a leading practice and as a best practice by the Government Finance Officers Association and the National League of Cities. Priority-based budgeting will bring a unique and innovative approach to budgeting that makes available resources with community priorities. At its essence, it is a process that aligns spending with priorities. It's about gaining community senses of its overarching priorities and then aligning the spending on the community's program with those priorities. It would allow the community to understand the core values and how the budget relates to those values, bringing them to life in an easy-to-understand and transparent way. This process would enable you to link funding decisions to priorities in your strategic plan. Here are some advantages. It would offer transparency into what services the city provides and how much it would cost to provide them. It would show how personnel affiliated with different programs, making it easy to understand where the workforce is spending their time. Also, it would give cost and context to programs using invaluable data points rather than categorizing them by departments. Furthermore, it would include programs alignment to community priorities to ensure that funded programs reflect community needs. In a nutshell, the holistic approach will help ensure that the community is able to identify and preserve those programs and services that are most highly valued and allow you to tell the story of what the city is offering to the residents.
Thank you. At this time, we have no more, no further public speakers, and I will turn it over to our city manager to introduce this budget session.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of council. Again, I want to thank you for scheduling time for this budget study session, and I'd like to begin by making some overall remarks about the budget. We're going to take, I think, the staff. We've got about four sections to go through. We're going to go through the general fund budget. We'll go through the capital budget. We have our financial advisor, who's going to talk about some finance strategies with us, and then we're going to conclude with our airport budget. And council members can certainly ask questions at any time throughout, but we will specifically take time after each one of those sections, any questions, and obviously when we're done, we'll have time for a lot more questions as well. So I'd like to begin, just to let the public know, this is the first of several points of discussion with the council. We're tentatively scheduled for a joint budget meeting with Measure J Commission, I think, now on June 5, which allows us to coordinate with their final schedule for this month, followed by council meeting discussions on June 5 and June 29 related to the budget. Per state law, council budget approval is required by July 1 of 2023. No approval of items is being asked of the council this evening. With me today for this presentation is Chris Mooney, our Acting Finance Director, and Andrew Neary, our Budget Manager. Our Executive Budget Committee, that includes Assistant City Manager Teresa Galivan and Deputy City Managers Flynn Fag and Jeremy Hammond, were also key to this effort. And of course, our department directors are here to answer any operational questions that might come up, and great thanks to them and all of their staff for the original budget work that they did. After we go through the budgets, again, we can, we'll spend a little time on each one of them. The staff and I are pleased to present this draft biennial budget to you for fiscal year 2324 and fiscal year 2425. The total all funds budget is $482.9 million for fiscal year 24 and $494 million for fiscal year 25. The general fund operating budget is $199.6 million for fiscal year 24 and $187.9 million for fiscal year 25. This is a structurally proposed budget, meaning that projected operating expenditures do not exceed projected operating revenue, and no one-time internal service fund dollars are being used to balance the budget. As we continue to recover in a post-COVID economy, we want to prepare for continued prosperity while also addressing critical needs, all in the context of managing for future long-term financial stability. You will note that the material we're presenting tonight is comprehensive and includes a number of graphical depictions of the budget that we believe will make it easier for the public to understand this complex subject matter. We want to continue working in this area to further enhance community transparency. So attached for your review is our staff report, the Budget in Brief addendum, a detailed and itemized capital budget, and a detailed and itemized airport budget. We have worked diligently to keep this biennial budget faithful to our community mission statement, which states that Palm Springs is an inclusive, world-class city dedicated to providing excellent and responsive public services to enhance the quality of life for current and future generations. So let me talk a bit about some of the budget highlights and challenges. More than anything else, this budget reflects our commitment to rebuild the capacity necessary to carry out our mission. The two priority areas that you've asked us to remain focused on include quality of life with a focus on improving homelessness, public safety and crime reduction, affordable housing, and economic development. And two, community infrastructure with the goals of improving city facilities, attention on the five-year capital improvement plan, and overall community design. To rebuild capacity, this biennial budget is recommending a number of actions and strategies. The addition of 26 positions to general fund departments, and I'll speak, we'll speak more about those in a bit. The addition of 49 positions to support unprecedented growth at the Palm Springs International Airport. Reclassification of a fund development position to a Chief Economic Development Officer at the Assistant Director level to drive new development opportunities and support business initiatives. In addition, we have kept our commitment to public safety when Measure J was passed in November 2011. We are strengthening our fire and police departments with added staffing, equipment, and new technology. That public safety commitment continues in this biennial budget specifically to include two new police dispatchers in fiscal year 24 and two more in fiscal year 25 at an annual cost of $243,000 and $249,000 respectively. Full Measure J funding of $2.75 million over the next two years for implementing the new computer-aided dispatch and records management system, three new firefighter EMTs in the biennial budget at an annual cost of $551,000. In the non-public safety areas, we've included six positions in parks and recreation, including project manager, administrative specialist, administrative assistant, lifeguard, and recreation program assistant at Demuth Park. Five facility maintenance positions, and additional admin positions, including full funding for a dedicated HR position to support airport operations. $750,000 for swim center locker rooms ADA ramp fence installation from a supplemental Measure J funded project. $850,000 for the next round of playground equipment and shade structure installation for Ruth Hardy and Baristo Parks, plus $100,000 for an interactive water play design consultant. In the city's capital plan, there is approximately $7 million budgeted to aid in the renovation of the library, as we've heard earlier. The library received a grant in fiscal year 23 for approximately $6.5 million, and in total, the city has $13.5 million for library renovation that will be completed over the next two fiscal years. The Measure J Commission is expected to have further discussions to potentially fund additional Phase 1 improvements. The city remains committed to improving the lives of its residents through its affordable housing initiative. Previously, the city council approved to set aside $10 million for affordable housing. On April 27, 2023, the city council approved funding in the amount of $3 million for the ALO Palm Canyon Project, leaving a balance of approximately $7 million in the set-aside funds, which the city has plans to disperse in the fiscal year 24 and fiscal year 25 budgets. Along with the affordable housing initiative, providing resources to the vulnerable homeless population that calls Palm Springs home has been a top priority of the city. Underway is the city's construction of a permanent navigation center to temporarily house some of the city's unhoused population. The city will be funding the construction and some of the operations with grant funds from the state. Prior to the completion of the permanent navigation center, the city continues to pursue additional opportunities for temporary and emergency shelter needs. In addition to the navigation center, the city is budgeting the remaining set-aside funds of $900,000, $4 million of which was originally approved by the council in fiscal year 23, to address further needs related to the homeless population, such as cool and warm centers and encampment cleanup. Also, $100,000 a year to Sea Vague over the next two years for homeless outreach services. The city has been proactively working to engage residents on becoming more sustainable and reducing the carbon footprint of the city in an impactful way. After the success of the city's first turf conversion program, the city will build on this success by deepening the program with help from the Desert Water Authority. The program will feature $400,000 for dwellings, $500,000 for homeowner associations, and $250,000 for low-income property owners. To meet upcoming CARB requirements, the city will begin transitioning its fleet replacement to EV-only. The city is planning a multi-year project targeted at electrical upgrades and the installation of 25 charging stations with a cost of $470,000 for the infrastructure and approximately $30,000 in ongoing expenses. This is in conjunction with the plan of using $450,000 of the climate set-aside funding on electric system design and upgrade work in support of this initiative. Keeping the city's main thoroughfares open and in safe working order is top of mind for the city. Throughout 2022, main roads have closed 38 times for an average of 76 days in total, with an estimated annual servicing cost of $81,000. Staff is recommending the purchase of an industrial-grade motor grader to reduce the time taken to clear away the roads with a cost of $500,000 in annual servicing costs of $47,000. We are proposing to increase street maintenance from $6 million to $9 million in fiscal year 24, funded by Measure J. For fiscal year 2425, the city is creating a rapid-response street repair team to address troubled spots throughout the city for increased readiness and safer road conditions through the ability to hot-patch street areas for longer-lasting repairs. Part of this is to acquire two industrial vehicles, hot-patching and aeroboard trucks for a cost of $275,000. Some additional initiatives include $6.2 million in fiscal year 24 for park maintenance and $6.3 million in fiscal year 25. Funding environmental initiatives with organic waste and street sweeping, full funding for continued convention center and tourism bureau operations, $212,000 annual in IT reinvestment with Intergov for integrating permitting and licensing efficiency, continued funding for the world-class Palm Springs International Film Festival, funding to meet all pension and labor contract obligations, and a full complement of street wastewater projects and upgrades that will be mentioned later in the capital budget presentation. Before wrapping up, I just want to make a couple of additional points. We're giving great thought to three large capital projects on the immediate horizon that include a renovation expansion of the public library, the relocation, construction of a new District 1 fire station, and implementation of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Thanks to the community's support of Measure J and the work of the Measure J Commission, we can envision financing strategies that will allow us to advance these initiatives now rather than waiting on a pay-and-till-fully-funded philosophy. In the next five to 10 years, the city will have a significant amount of public debt coming off our books, and we've arranged for Suzanne Harrell, our longtime financial advisor from Harrell &amp; Company Advisors, to give us an update in a few minutes that can help us, similar to how the downtown revitalization financing program was managed. Also, next month, our finance team will be bringing forward a reserve fund policy for your considered approval that will work hand-in-hand with Suzanne's remarks. That policy could include plans for capital replacement reserves, infrastructure, and asset management. Later in the year, we also want to bring forward- Later in the year, we also want to bring forward a pension stabilization plan for your considered approval. One of the items that's not in here is the initiative that was involved with the city on Blue Zones earlier in the year. That work is undergoing, and we understand they're working on a report to bring to us at a later time, so we haven't reacted to that initiative right now. And so finally, I want to thank, thank the staff, particularly Chris Mooney and Drew, for all their hard work. When I got here, I asked them to pivot quickly and prepare a biennial budget for you as opposed to the single-year budget, and they have performed remarkably in putting that all together, along with the staff of all of our department directors, and so I want to thank them for all their work. So with that, I'm going to turn the general fund budget presentation over to Chris and Drew.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Council members. We're going to go through the general fund budget. The format of this will be very similar than what we did at the mid-year update. Also, last year's budget, where I'll run through the general fund, and we'll do a capital budget update and a capital project update, and then we will move into the financing discussion with Suzanne, and then we'll wrap it up with the airport budget update. So very similar format than the mid-year. So with that, thank you, Scott, for those opening remarks. We'll go ahead and look at some of these numbers. Oh, there we go. Okay. Hope everybody, everybody can see that. We tried to make it as big as we could. So we're going to start out with revenue. I'm going to focus mainly on the second column, which is the fiscal year 24 budget, and the third column, which is the fiscal year 25 budget. Not going to talk too much about 23 until we get to the very end of the presentation. So we'll start out with the largest revenue line item that the city has, and that's the TOT tax or the transient occupancy tax. I do want to say that we are on target to meet our forecast of almost $50 million in '23, so I think that's good news. With that, we are seeing vacation rental revenue down about 11% from $13.2 million in '22 to $11.7 million year-to-date. So while that number started out pretty slow, the last two months have been good vacation rental revenue months exceeding what we did in fiscal year '22 for the last two months. If that trend continues, we should be able to close that gap on what we did last year. For fiscal year '24, TOT in general or in total, which is all hotel and all vacation rental revenue, that makes up the 48.9 million. We're budgeting it to be slightly down in fiscal year '24, about 2%. And then in fiscal year '25, we show an increase of about 4.5%. Other revenue line items for the budget, the property taxes, we assume slow, steady growth like we have in the past. For '24 and '25, we're going to show 2% growth at $31 million in '24 and $31.6 million in fiscal year '25. Utility users' tax continues to be strong. We are continuing its growth with consultation from our tax advisors. We have given good numbers for the next couple of fiscal years at $20.9 million in '24 and $24 million in '25. So that's good growth over the next couple of years, again, in line with what our tax consultants are forecasting. And then just want to touch on the all other sources of revenue. It includes our fees for the city. That's the $28.2, $29.2 million in '24 and the $29.6 million in '25. What makes up that category are fees for city services, licensing and permitting fees, fines and penalties, and interest income, and many other areas that make up what we could consider miscellaneous revenue. Revenue highlights continued. Grant revenue, as we saw in the previous slide, I'll jump back real quick, is going to go down from fiscal year '24 from $21.1 million to $1.7. We have assumed in the budget that a lot of the homeless, state homelessness grants are going to be spent. We do, are probably fairly sure that we're going to have some carryover over those funds into '25, but we went ahead and made the assumption that we're going to spend most of those dollars in '24. Sorry, I have to go back. Give me just a minute here. I think Todd's going to have to help me get back to Slide 2. Todd, can you help me get back to Slide 2, please? Thank you. All right, sorry about that. Okay, grant revenue expected to decline significantly because we're assuming that we're going to use a lot of the homelessness funds. Just sort of a side note, the TOT, the property tax, sales and use tax, and utility users' tax make up 75% of the city's operating revenue, so that's why we pay so much attention to those four items and watch them very closely throughout the year to be sure we're on target to meet what we have budgeted or what we have forecasted. Sales and use tax going to be flat from '23 to '24, a little bit of growth in '25 at 3.7%. Again, this is one of those line items that we sort of rely on our tax consultants for their help in forecasting. The way they give us the numbers, they give us a very aggressive number, they give us a very conservative number, and then they give us that middle target. So what we use in our forecasting and budgeting is that middle target. And lastly, on the cannabis tax revenues, we have budgeted, they will continue to decline. We have put a 5% reduction in cannabis tax revenue each in '24 and in '25. We'll move on to some of the expenditure highlights. So we plan to spend $216.4 million in fiscal year '24 and $184.1 million in fiscal year '25. And a lot of what Scott had mentioned, I'm just going to reiterate here in this presentation, these are the big items that are in that budget. So first, we have the remaining set-aside of $7 million for affordable housing to be used on some initiatives such as rental assistance, low-income housing rehabilitation, and additional funding over the next two years to facilitate development opportunities. Again, continue to partner with DWA on TERF conversion. That's going to total about $1.2 million. We have the $950,000 total for the electrical system upgrade and infrastructure build-out for the 25 new charging stations. The purchase of the motor grader at a cost of $500,000, again, to help open the roads quicker after weather events. And then grant funds, the homelessness state grant funds that we have sitting in grant expenses are going to be used for the operation, for the construction, and some of it for the operation of the navigation center over the next couple of years. This is just a slide. We're starting to get into some of our staffing expenses and go into a little bit more detail on some of the staffing that the general fund is going to absorb. Just wanted to show you that salaries and benefits make up a significant portion of the budget at about 60% to 63% on an annual basis for fiscal year '24 and fiscal year The staffing highlights, so the city plans to add 13 positions in both fiscal year '24 and fiscal year '25. The total annual fully-loaded cost for fiscal year '24 is about $1.9 million annually, and in fiscal year '25, it's about $1.6 million annually. The highlighted positions I have here are the three firefighter EMTs, the two police dispatchers, and two park and rec staff, which is a lifeguard and a recreation assistant at Demuth. And then in '25, again, two more police dispatchers and four park and rec staff, which are two project managers for the many projects that the park and recs have to get completed, and then two administrative staff as well. Another slide, just to kind of show city staffing at a glance, kind of gives you the bigger areas. General government is, you know, general government, it's IT, it's finance, it's HR, it's economic development, community development, engineering, so that's what, it's made up of many different areas. You have the police department and fire, and then, of course, the airport. You can see it grows from 18% of total staffing to 22%, which is their initiative to staff up the airport to meet the demand. Lastly, this is the fund balance slide, so I'll go over this in a little bit of detail. This will give us a summary of revenue expenses, and then it will also give us total fund balance broken out into what we are proposing for a minimum, a remaining unassigned, and it also gives us our CalPERS set-aside fund balance as well. So I'm going to begin over the third column over in the second green column. I'm going to go down to total revenues, which is $186.4 million, which we're projecting for the end of this year. We have expenditures of $136 million, transfers out, and again, those are transfers to other funds, which we call transfers out. That's $27 million, so that goes for things like the general fund contributes to the debt service fund. The general fund contributes to the fleet internal service fund for vehicle purchases and the facilities fund. And if councilor remembers from last year, we gave a lot of extra dollars to those funds to kind of pad them up for projects and purchases that weren't performed over COVID. So that's a pretty big number for fiscal year '23. We have, the operating surplus is about $11 million, which we're forecasting for '23. We have set-asides that we've used so far this year. This is the actual money that has gone out the door, which is $3.86 million. So that was the contribution to DAP Health, the $2.8 million, that was the big number in there. We have grant expense of about $9.9 million. So total expenditures expected for fiscal year '23, $177.7 million for a total operating surplus projected at $8.7 million. And so we go down to the total unassigned fund balance of $112.6 million. The CalPERS reserve set-aside fund balance is $34.3 million, or projected to be $34.3 million at the end of this year. And as councilor probably remembers, we grow that number by about $6 million, or we try to grow that number by about $6 million each year. Going to fiscal year '24, we start at the very top with $112 million. That's the beginning fund balance, projected revenues of $199 million, projected operating expenditures of $155 million. We have transfers out of $19 million. Set-asides, that's the total remaining set-asides, and I'll just say that after fiscal year '24 and '25, we have a plan to use all the set-aside money except for the police department set-aside, which is $4 million, and then we have $1.6 million remaining in workforce development. But other than that, the, there is a plan to use the set-aside funds. $216 million in total expenditures and a deficit of $16.7 million, but keep in mind that that's with the $19 million set-asides that we're going to spend in fiscal year '24, and without that money, we'd be showing basically an operating surplus. We'll go down to the proposed minimum fund balance, and this is what Scott had mentioned earlier. We're going to be bringing a fund balance policy to the council sometime in June. This will be a fund balance policy that is in line with the Government Finance Officers' Association of America's guidelines. It's a very common policy, and there's a lot of really common fund balance best practices within this policy. We'll bring that to the council hopefully in the next couple of meetings. So the proposed minimum fund balance that we have in play right now is about $30 million. The remaining unassigned fund balance is about $66 million for total unassigned fund balance of $95.9 million, I think that is. And then the CalPERS set-aside, again, in '24, growing it by $6 million to end the year at $40.25 million. And as I have over in my side note, as Scott mentioned earlier, we plan to bring to council for approval a plan that outlines to use some of that set-aside money to begin to pay down the CalPERS unfunded accrued liability. And then going over to the very last column in '25, fund balance starts out at $95 million, about $187 million in revenue, operating expenditures of $183, transfers out 18, operating surplus of about $3.8 million. Again, we're assuming the set-asides will be used, but we probably will have some carryover into '25. We're just making the assumption that they're going to be used in '24. Grant expense down significantly to 1.7, and so we're left with an overall surplus in '25 of about $3.8 million. We've assumed the same proposed minimum fund balance at $30 million. Remaining unassigned fund balance is just under $70 million, and the CalPERS set-aside grows again, $6 million to $46.2 million. And with that, that's the end of the general fund presentation, so I'd be more than happy to take any questions.
Do we have any questions from council? Go ahead, Councilmember DeHart.
The proposed minimum fund balance of $30,002,8. Why does that not change the next year?
It, when we, we just kept the number the same. It will change when we implement our fund balance policy, and we go with a straight percentages, or we want to go with a straight percentage of operating expenditures, which we'll come to council with that. Then it'll fluctuate when the operating expenditures fluctuate. Right now, we just made it flat year-over-year.
So it's going to be based on a percentage of total expenditures?
Total operating expenditures. So it'll be a part of that $163 million line item up above in the, in the financial statements. So as that number fluctuates, the operating, or the fund balance minimum will fluctuate as well, too. Did GFA guidelines really kind of say you want to pick the less volatile line item, either expenditures or revenue? And my practice has been to always use operating expenditures. It seems to be the less volatile line item.
And are those charts in our packet? Because I don't see them.
Oh, yes, they are. They're in the Attachment 1 in the Budget Brief. It's a little bit more lengthy, but they are in there. Now, are you talking about the graphical charts or the fund balance worksheet?
The pie charts that you were showing?
The pie charts are not, I don't think, are not in, not these exact ones. There are some pie charts in there, but these are different to what's in the Budget Brief.
Okay. How do we get a copy?
We can certainly send the council the copy when we're finished.
Yeah, thanks.
Councilman, let me also mention, we'll have these documents online on our website tomorrow, in addition to my comments as well.
Any other questions? Councilmember Middleton?
Thank you. We end up with a lot of questions, but I'm going to try to keep them short. The, and this is very impressive. I'm pleased, and the manner in which this has been formatted is very easy to follow and much appreciated, and I greatly appreciate some of the historical data that we have that let us see some trends in ways that we've not previously been able to see, so thank you. I'm going to go right to the start. I see an addition of two dispatchers this upcoming year and two more the following year, but I don't see any additional police officers in this budget, and there's nothing that I hear more requests for than more police officers, except maybe fewer people that are homeless on the street.
Yes, council, councilmember, I think, I think the police department is going through a staffing study in the coming year, and once they go through that, I think the chief and I will be able to get together and have a little better feel for where we might be going long-term on police staffing.
Do you have a sense of what the timeframe for that study is going to be? And the second part of that question will be, are we certain we will have funds set aside to be able to address that staffing study when it comes?
Councilmember Middleton, I can address the first part of it. We already went through the process to select a firm. I wasn't happy with the firms. Came in way over budget and... I wasn't happy with the firms, came in way over budget and undervalued in what, from what we were looking for. Clear with me that he wants me to get this done. And so we're working procurement to come up with a process that will get us to where we need to go, that is keeping within what we expect for the city of Palm Springs.
And council member, let me just maybe emphasize something I didn't say in the beginning also is that we'll, we're proposing a biennial budget mainly for the public's benefit, a two-year budget. But that doesn't mean we don't look at it throughout the two years. So typically what happens at very minimum is we come back to council with a continuation budget. Halfway after one year, we consider things just along the lines of what council member Middleton is mentioning, unfunded state mandates that we have and other things. Clearly, we will make adjustments as always in the continuation budget.
This is probably more a comment than a question, but looking at grant revenue, it strikes me that particularly as we get into the '24-'25 projection, less than $2 million in grants coming in is not very impressive and raises for me questions as to what we need to be doing to be more effective when it comes to bringing in grants. And I really do have some concerns as to whether or not we are fully addressing opportunities to go after more grants and to engage city council members in lobbying our electeds in DC and in Sacramento for more grant funding.
That's noted, council member. And just for the sake of the budget, we're kind of far out to be able to really know, you know, in that '25 year. Once we get closer, we'll probably have a better indication. Hopefully those grant funds grow.
I think if I'm, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but it seems you're taking a fairly conservative approach to most of these estimates and that strikes me as being very prudent. Without, those are my main points, so let me be quiet and let others speak.
Other council members? Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate on the grants as well. I was, I was with council member Middleton at the Boys and Girls Club, where I think Veronica Goodhart helped us, helped them get $3 million grant for. And I think we should start to budget that so that we make it a priority going out, that we have grant revenue coming in. Sorry, she got $3 million for cannabis education and for the kids and prevention and, and open a whole center on that. And I think there's a lot of other funds out there for, for parks and things, and we need to make that a priority. On the T O T, are we taking into account the, the new hotels? Is there revenue coming in from those?
Not specifically. Probably something we should look at, but we don't specifically call out expansion in the numbers.
Okay. And are we, I know we've had an incentive program for room upgrades for the small hotels. Are we continuing?
Yes, we are.
Having that for the big hotels as well?
I believe so, yes. I think that number is kind of winding down a little bit, but we still have it in place.
Okay. I think a lot of them probably do for an upgrade again at some point. I also wanted to ask just a question on the tribal sales tax deal. Are we seeing any effect of that yet? Do we know?
No, we haven't. And it's probably something I need to look into, but we haven't, we haven't seen any, any impact of it yet at all.
Okay. And I just wanted to double check on some, I have a little questions on a bunch of the details stuck in the back. Should I wait till the end of it for that? Be better?
Go ahead.
I'll wait till the end and go through it all in case it's covered elsewhere. But I am just going to point out something on that one slide you showed where the community and economic development was 1% of our staffing expense. And, and I'm going to keep saying this later, I'll go on, but 50% of our revenue comes from our local businesses. It seems like we're sort of assuming that they're going to keep getting our revenue in. And I think we need to take a much more proactive role in a very senior level to be getting in, to ensuring that we maintain that. I think between cannabis, T O T and sales tax, it's 75, it's half our budget, which we have direct control with our, with our local businesses. So I'm, I'm going to continue on that, that later, especially when getting to the expenses that I think we all want to see with housing, with our parks, with the library, with the fire station, that we're going to need to ensure that we actually have a steady revenue stream to do all the projects that I think a lot of us want to do. And then, of course, we're going to have a navigation center that is going to need operating budget going forward. So I'll keep my specific questions till, till the end and then I'll, I'll circle back. But thank you. This was great. It was really a lot of work. I'm very glad we're doing a two-year budget and I think it'll really, really help a lot and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any additional questions at this time? Councilmember Holstich?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Also trying to decide what level of questions to ask right now. You talked about street maintenance going from 6 million to 9 million a year. I think last budget cycle, we had an in-depth conversation about that and we had additional funds that went beyond the normal 6 million that we've been doing year over year. So can you just explain a little bit about why that number went up so much? And what is the cost savings and the analysis behind that?
Yeah, so I can talk to the dollars and maybe Joel could give a little color to some of the other question. But we had a few years ago, my understanding was we had a, we didn't spend all of that money. So there was a $3 million that was left over that we've been carrying over for a couple of years. Well, we decided, Joel has decided that in '24, it's time to spend the money. So we're going to increase it from 6 to 9 million.
So the sense isn't that it's going to be an annual increase of 6 to 9 million, but in fact, it's just using those rollover funds?
Yeah, that's correct. It's a one-time increase to $9 million and then we will go back to the 6 million.
Great. Thank you. I think that's consistent with council's directions, that we want to use those rollover funds and really deploy them for our community. For firefighters, the budget has going to three, three additional firefighter EMT positions. We had talked about a plan of getting to 4-0 staffing. I believe that would require six new firefighter EMT positions. We had a long conversation about this last budget cycle and we have a new fire chief, so welcome. We're so glad to have you in our community. Welcome. As you, we just start budgeting and you're sitting here, but we're really grateful to have you. So I assume our new fire chief will have some input there and we really want his input over the budget. But could you speak a little bit about why three firefighter EMT positions were recommended? And if there's a plan to get to full 4-0 staffing and what that looks like?
Certainly, council member. The only thing, I'll comment on that regard. It was probably just more of a bit of prudent, cautious budgeting. Over these next couple of years, as was indicated, we're going to be looking to see how the economy is performing and where we're going. We either need to add, we need to add in groups of three, I think, to get fully, fully staffed. So three, adding three gets, gets us to four of our five fully four-person staffed situations. And I think we would look at now, you know, never say never, a year from now, if revenue is as strong, the economy is strong, we might be more comfortable with looking at adding the next three group of firefighters a year from now. But we were just a little bit cautious in wanting to see how the economy performs over the next 12 months or so.
Thank you. And I think last budget cycle, an administrative or a deputy chief or there was a battalion chief, I think, recommended as a battalion chief included in this budget. I know we had talked about the ratio and supervision and how to best align the department with firefighter CMTs and battalion chief and other supervisory positions.
Yeah, and potentially on the battalion chief position, I wanted to make sure the fire chief got here and got a chance to do an evaluation for himself. We've talked about potentially partnering that position with airport funding because a lot of that position will potentially serve airport operations. So we need to kind of look at it from that standpoint as well.
Great. So that's not currently, that position's not currently included in this budget?
No, it's not.
Got it. Thank you. But it might, it sounds like it might be once we get the analysis from our new chief. That sounds great. For fire station one, I know we've talked a lot about planning for that capital need. So could you just talk a little bit about that in this budget and what we need to think through? Because that is very urgent.
Yeah, and I think it, it might come into focus a little more when we talk about our financial, financial strategies with our advisor that's coming, that's going to be speaking in just a few minutes about that. But we know that it's, it's a, it's a critical obligation. We talked in our staff meeting this morning about trying to do planning for that. So it's not just, it's a complicated process, right? And we talked about maybe having a team that included both fire, fire department expertise, city planning expertise. You can't just set a new fire station down anywhere. It has to be within models of how we can respond quickest to the greatest area in that part of the city. And then my experience is you, it's always good to have some people in your city planning department being a participant in that. Your fire personnel are tremendous in, in the technical expertise of where it needs to be and how it needs to get there. But there's always, there's always implications about what a fire station does in a particular location. And we want to make sure that we have the right amount of community engagement and everything that goes along with it. And then very importantly, as the historic preservation people remind me, are the current station, I believe, is a class one building. And so we're going to need to take great care to think about what, what is the reuse of that particular building if we're to vacate it. So it, it, the, the whole process is going to take a good bit of time. It's going to take a lot of, a lot of study, deployment modeling on behalf of the fire department to figure out where would be the, where are some of the locations we can consider? And then you have to hope you can find acquired property to start building at that location. So we need to get going on it. And I think it'll probably take every bit of the next biennial budget to truly narrow that down, narrow down a location and also then put your financing strategy together to get started.
Great. Thank you. A few other questions. So council had discussed and I think requested it to come forward or at least discuss reducing the cannabis tax rate like other cities in the Coachella Valley have done. So that's not included in this budget. We're assuming the same cannabis tax rate. Would that be a significant difference if council matched other cities that we're competing with?
Yeah, without doing analysis, I would still say if you went from 10 to 5, like I've been told, that's what is in other areas, you're probably going to see a significant downturn in the revenue.
Yeah, so that would be helpful to understand as we think through council policy on cannabis taxation and what other cities are doing in the market. And then I know Mayor Protem has asked for the T O T revenue stream, a portion for affordable housing. We discussed just from the general fund as a set aside or a separate fund. So is that included in this budget or how should we think that through and plan for it?
That is currently not into this budget. We have been reviewing that and, and we have been, had a few internal discussions on it already. And it's, it's, we're about ready to hopefully bring something before the council after a few more discussions.
Thank you. I think that it'd be, it has my support. We've asked for it for a few times and for a while now. So I'd love to see us include that in this budget. And maybe it doesn't matter because the money's fungible and it's just about where we're placing money as opposed to expense and revenue. So maybe that's okay. But let's just think through, especially as we deploy our housing and homelessness funds, you know, if we need additional resources. And then last question, not last question, but last question for right now, just the library. So we got the public comment. Thank you to the friends of the library and the board for all their work as well as our staff. So do you think that the money we have right now set aside for the library project is sufficient? Should we think through finding additional money to protect and save for that giant project?
Yeah, certainly. I think the money that we have set aside, which is around just under 14 million, you know, will cover some of what the library needs in their renovation. I think as we get further into our discussing, our discussion today and we talk financing strategies, I think that will also could potentially be part of what we do with the library as well.
And let me just add, I think this could be a really good point of discussion when we have our joint meeting with the Measure J Commission in a few weeks. It's something that they've talked about internally themselves about big capital projects and how to fund those. So I, I think there'll be more discussion on that. The library, we can ask our library services director to come forward, maybe and explain just quickly what the, where they, where they're at. But they're getting ready to go out for RFP, I think, on the first phase of their library project, which would be primarily most of the infrastructure work and everything that goes into the, the kind of the behind the scenes stuff that they need at that facility to modernize it. And so it'll cover a lot of that, I believe. But then there's going to be a significant amount of, maybe for lack of a better word, phase two improvements, additions, expansions, modernization things that will likely need to be part of a, a financing strategy.
Hi, thanks. And to answer your question directly, no. The funding doesn't include everything. And our, the grant that we received is strictly for infrastructure for the main library. The RFQ process is going quite well. We've had a great response. So the applications have come in and now the, the team is tasked with grading and ranking the candidates to select an architect for this project. The things that aren't included are things that actually absolutely have to happen. Packing, moving, storage, carpet, paint, anything on the exterior, exterior paint. There's a whole list, I literally have a list of things that are not included but have to happen to put the project back together. So the infrastructure grant really just does, you know, the basics that, the guts, the plumbing, electrical sprinklers, we don't have sprinklers in the, in the building. Our fire life safety, all needs improved, ADA improvements, the restrooms. All of those things have to happen, but there's a lot that's not covered that we'll have to pick up. And so we're hoping that we can have that discussion to, to, to pledge the money. And yes, there are community groups that have, the friends have, have a little money. The foundation's hoping to raise money. The library board of trustees has a little money. It's going to take all the money.
Thank you. I remember we looked over the scope together for the request for proposals and we talked about what wasn't funded. So it would be great to get a sense of what number we're building to, especially for the meeting with Measure J. So we really can have a sense, is it a 20 million? Is it a $30 million project? You know, what's that total estimate so we can plan for it in our budget? Because it absolutely should be reflected in this two-year budget.
And, you know, I might chime in, that's kind of the issue we're having with a lot of projects these days, right? We can develop a scope. We have a wish list of everything we want to do. And then the, and we might have an idea about how much it costs. And then you go out to bid and you find out what the bids are coming in. And then you're in sticker shock and then you're trying to figure out. So Jeannie's probably very, very correct in that the money that we have set aside certainly will not be enough to do the entire project. Can it get started with some of the initial infrastructure, behind the scenes stuff? We would hope a lot of it would be able to. But, you know, this construction market is rapidly changing. Costs are rapidly escalating. And, you know, until we actually go out to bid on some of this stuff and do some estimating, with, with a really strong scope of work, it's going to be, you know, really hard to guess a number.
Thanks. I agree. And so we just need to do the, the financial planning to get there since we know we don't have enough now and we know we're going to need a lot more. And so I'd like to plan because what we have been doing is coming up with projects and then, you know, waiting 10 years plus as we wait for a project to move forward. And then we have to go find the money with an R, with a bid. And then it gets outdated as we find the money in the community. So it would be very good to plan for that in our budget. I know Mayor Tem and others agree. Thank you.
Can I just clarify one thing? It was 14 million to set aside that we have or does that include the state grant? So we have 8 million just put aside with the Measure J money? Seven, okay.
Seven, yes.
Yeah. I feel pretty sure this is probably a $30 million project, and I think we, if we move forward right away, and if we wait five years, it'll be a $40 million project. So I think we have to assume that going in right now. But, yeah, so we'll double what we have. But, thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this time, we'll move on to the capital budget. Please.
I'd like to ask a couple of questions with relation to the staffing increases that are being proposed for the airport. Get an overview as to what is being proposed and the revenue projections that are necessary to cover those, those new expenses.
We will be talking about the airport later.
Is that?
Yes, council member. We're going to come back for a complete presentation on the budget, on the airport budget.
Thank you. All right, please.
Okay, I'm going to run over the funding portion of the capital and give an overview of the, of the 24 budget and the 25 budget. And then I'll turn it over to City Engineer Joel Motavol to talk a little bit more about projects specific. So the first half of this slide is the, all the funds that make up our capital funding from a non-enterprise fund perspective. So if it's airport capital, or if it's wastewater treatment plant capital, it will not be in here because their funds pay for that separately with their own user fees and, and other things. So we'll go through here, the gas tax fund. There's several funds here that go for streets and transportation. The gas tax fund is one of those, the Measure A fund is another, and the RMRA, which is the Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Act. All of those have some impact on streets and transportation. They're restricted for that use. It is fairly significant dollars, especially when you look at what Measure A brings in on an annual basis as well. We have the drainage fund. That's an impact fee on new development that'll go for, I believe it's new development on vacant land, if I have that right, that'll go to new drainage systems so that those properly work. We have the Quimby Fund, which is also an impact fee on residential development, paid in lieu of any green space or parks that would go into a residential neighborhood. That is restricted for parks and rec. We also have the Measure J Fund, of course, the 1% sales tax. While it has a general use, the commission has long adopted mostly of that, those funds to be capital oriented. So most of the Measure J funds are for city capital projects. And then we have their own capital fund. And the revenue that you see there is largely reimbursed road and bridge expenses from Caltrans. So it's a significant amount of dollars. Caltrans reimburses the city for approved road and bridge projects to the tune of almost 90%. So it is significant dollars when you're talking about some of the big projects like the Indian Canyon Bridge widening that were taking place, which is about 34, $44 million. So we get 90% of that money back from Caltrans. We also get a reimbursement back from C-VAG. I believe that goes into the Measure A fund. And they reimburse us at 75% of any approved regional project as well. So a lot of the dollars that we see here, while some of them are tax dollars, impact fees, they're really big dollars go for, come from Caltrans, comes from C-VAG, and that's how we get a lot of the big, large projects funded in the capital area. So with that, $71.8 million in total budgeted revenue for fiscal year '24. The general fund is a transfer in, there's a transfer in from the general fund. Historically, the general fund supports capital to the tune of $2 million per year. So we're going to continue that funding. I think it was discontinued last year, but we're picking it back up this year. And then budgeted expenditures is about $83.8 million. We're left with the ending fund balance in '24 of about $66 million. Go down to the second half of this slide, look at fiscal year '25, so the very last row, under revenue, total revenue, $55.3 million, down significantly. But that's because it depends on the projects that you do. If you don't have some of the big projects, you're not going to give as much money back from Caltrans. Again, there's a $2 million influx from the general fund, and then you have $49.2 million in expenditures. You're left with about $71 million in fund balance at the end of fiscal year '25. I'd be more than happy to take any questions on the revenue piece before I turn it over to City Engineer.
Looks like there are no questions at this time.
I'll turn it over to Joel.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the City Council, Joel Motavol, City Engineer. How are we doing today? So I'm going to talk a little bit about our five-year capital program. This five-year capital program has been around now for at least two, three years. Last year, we brought it forward. And this year, what we intend to do is not to really introduce any new projects. We have currently over 70 projects, active projects in the five-year CIP. So my intent is not to introduce any new project. There is one that we're bringing back that was a part of our five-year CIP, which is a rim road winding study. That's where the Araby Cove closes down, the residents of that neighborhood use rim road. So I'm bringing that project back. Other than that, we're going to maintain our 70 projects that we have. And I say over 70 projects because built in those 70 projects, there's two or three areas where we have other projects. For example, we have our pedestrian master plan and our local road safety plan. Each one of those has projects associated with that. The, our pedestrian master plan has 34 projects identified throughout the city. So the staff and my staff are working to move those projects forward. So it's not only 70 that we have, but within those 70, we have other smaller projects embedded in them. Our traffic calming program also involves small, little projects all over the city. Those also take a lot of time, and they actually add to our, our project count. And one of the things that I wanted to note, for this year, or what the city manager said earlier is very poignant, our project estimation or estimating our cost is not on point. We've been, a lot of these projects started a long time ago. Our estimates are old. And as we try to revise them, we're not there yet because we're not getting close to when we're actually constructing the project. So we're budgeting, we're estimating, projecting essentially for 70 projects, how much those, how much that cost is going to be. So every year, when I look at the projects, I take a look. This year, what I decided to do is for the two fiscal years that are coming, increase our requests by 30%. So I'm taking each one of those budgets that I would have normally asked what I thought was the right number two, a year ago, increasing that by 30%. But I'm not doing it across the board. There are certain projects that are, I've increased it a little bit more just because I know the nature of the project and the cost for construction in those areas. So that's our attempt to start trying to rectify being always, or asking money from council time and again, right? With the real, the real way we should do it, and I think the city manager hit on it, is get to a point where we've designed the project, have a good engineer's estimate, get ready to bid the project, and then we come to council and say, this is our true number. But what we've done is we create a rough order of magnitude for our projects to be able to budget and project. And that's what we're doing essentially. That's what you see in our five-year program. Let me see. So as far as staffing, we, council last year approved two project managers, essentially non-engineers. We're having difficult time bringing engineers to the city. So as of this month, I've been able to hire two project managers, but unfortunately, over the same course of time, I lost two engineers. So I'm basically backed down again, and we're advertising for two engineers. So with the staff that I do have available, then I'm going to show in the next slide here, in the last fiscal year, we've been able to complete 14 capital projects. So I'm going to touch a little bit on the, on those projects. So one of the projects we were able to finish is Cycle 7 Traffic Signal Program, that's 17 signals all over the, the city. We did our flashing beacon and dynamic message board, it's just completed, it's going to, we're about to make it go live. Our North Palm Canyon Traffic Signal Project, it's still in the works. We are going to finish it in the fiscal year, but we are going to have minor things that we need to do in July. So I still counted it as completed this year, but it will jump into the next fiscal year. We did a city roof replacement, Pavilion Aqua Center acoustic upgrade, Desert Highland Park project, so we did a few of those, the Swim Center shade structure. We also finished our 6.9 million paving project and our slurry project. And I also say there, we have one community-initiated Measure J-funded project that was funded and completed, the Visitor Center uplighting Project. So you can see, last fiscal year, we completed 14 projects. And on the next slide here, in this next fiscal year, we're going to have 17 projects under construction. So we're at a pace at about 10 to 15 projects being constructed every year. So some of the, the highlights on our construction projects next year are the 44 million bridge project, which is a big project that's going to, it's already been awarded, but we're going to start working here in the summer. And that's going to go through three fiscal years. So it'll take three years to complete. The Plaza Theater renovation is going to be under construction. The HSIP Cycle 8, 14 additional traffic signals will be under construction. We have a major storm lane project that's going to go on Ramon Road next to the high school. That's, that's a big project that's going to be under construction. The field lighting upgrades was awarded this year, but are going to construction next year. We're also going to be working on the navigation center, the Arnold Track Sewer, and a few wastewater treatment projects, all under construction. So with that, I have, those 17 projects are under construction, all the other projects are in different phases. We're either scoping them out, we're planning them, we're designing them, we're working with our architects. So in a nutshell, that's sort of what I wanted to present to you, that we're not really increasing our, our project load, but we do have a lot of projects that we're working on and trying to staff up to, to deliver those projects. The next two slides are visual. It's kind of interesting, I watched the Guardians of the Galaxy movie. So here is our project improvement program universe. So it's really giving you an idea of the, the projects and how much we're spending. Andrew put this together, so I wanted to bring him up here to kind of explain a little bit of what he put and why he did this really cool visual.
Good evening, council members. My name is Andrew, Budget Manager. So I'm more of a visual kind of person. And so working with Joel has been amazing, you know, looking at all his projects, tracking everything, but it's all been a lot of numbers, a lot of just tables. And so I said, hey, what if we showed kind of the scope of each project, kind of what we're looking to allocate to each project and how many projects there are? If you notice in the top right, there's what I call the sun. That's a conglomeration of other smaller projects, no less important, but just smaller in dollar size of where we're allocating other items. So the globe size kind of gives you the visual representation of kind of where we're, we're putting our dollars. A lot of the bridges and things like that are just very capital intensive. So just to kind of give you the visual.
Right, and the big visual there is that big globe. The Vestacino Bridge is going to be a $100 million-plus-dollar project that we're working on. So in the next, hoping to start constructing in the next three, four years. So with that, that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you very much. Do you have questions? Councilmember Middleton.
Okay, thank you. Joel, I was hoping that it was going to be an increase of $9 million going forward forever on street repairs.
I know you were.
Well, on that point, we are bringing forward our new pavement management program that may introduce or may support in requesting additional funding. But for now, I don't have that in front of me, so I didn't feel comfortable asking it for the next year.
Is there going to be a new PCI scoring study done before we dedicate this next $9 million?
What's been complete, we haven't finalized it, and my goal was to bring it in before, within the next few council.
The work's already been done.
Yes.
When do you expect we will get that one?
Well, I was hoping to bring it in June, maybe the first meeting in June.
All right, thank you. When you do, it would be very good to be able to visually see what does $9 million get us? What streets are actually going to end up being repaired so that we can all see what is still left to be undone? Thank you. One of the issues that we had that's not a part of this budget as I see it is making changes to Indian Canyon and Gene Autry. And that's a part of a C-VAG project, but I just want to highlight that we need to keep on trying to find the federal funding that will allow us to proceed on those projects.
Right, to that end, I am on that team, working with C-VAG directly. The tribe actually reached out to see if we could use some of the funding that we're asking, because they have less restrictions than we do. So I put the tribe together with C-VAG so that we could get funding, and they might be able to, to support us there. I just made the connection, and I will follow up.
Okay, thank you. Look forward to seeing that. My last question is, do we have the, you're trying to hire two new engineers?
Yeah.
What's the challenge you're running into?
They're not applying.
So are we?
I think, I mean, if you, if I'm going to be blunt, the private sector does pay more money than the, the public sector. So there's, there's, there's that.
I think that's an issue we're going to have to address.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I, that was also my question is, just what can we do to support having more engineering staff? Because I think we do have a high turnover rate at this time, is that correct?
We do. Well, I won't say a high turnover rate, but we, we are losing engineers, and we have lost them to the private sector. So there is a challenge with, the City of Palm Springs has a really active capital program, and when you come to the City of Palm Springs and you're working on my department, you're working hard. You're working as hard as the private sector. And that's misinterpret, people don't understand that, that when you're working with, within what we have and with all the work that the city has, it demands a lot of your time. So I think some folks might get scared away.
Is there a need for more than two engineers?
The capacity I have, if I, if I have two project managers, and then I already have two engineers myself and two more, I think we're at a point where we're, we're, we're good. I may need one or more, one or two more, but I can see that over the next two years because I need to bring my project managers in, acclimate them to what we're doing because they're non-engineers, they need to work with my engineers. And then I, I lost my principal engineer, so I may bring in a principal engineer or an assistant city engineer. But my staff right now is doing, as I showed, that they're, they're able to deliver 14 to 15, 10 to 15 projects a year in construction.
Yeah, it's incredible, and we thank you for staying with us and leading the charge. Please don't go ever. All right, other questions? Mayor Pro Tem.
Yeah, so I just, I want to reiterate, so you're not taking on more projects? Is that a staffing? Is that completely a staffing management issue?
It's, we have 70 projects, and I think that is, that's a huge workload.
It's a lot, yeah.
Even if I hired four or five more. So what we're doing, and that's the intent of the five-year CIP, is to look for five years and see where we're actually going to be constructing, and then using our staff accordingly. And that's what I've been trying to do.
Okay.
So bringing in five, six doesn't help me because you have to manage all those folks, right? You have to be able to, to, if we get to a point where we have too many staff and we're building our projects, we may run, I mean, I won't say this, we probably won't run out of projects, right? But there's a, there's a limit to how much staff you have versus how many projects you can take on.
Like, for instance, I think we have, you have 37 pedestrian master plan projects, and you're going to be working on the first five next year, is that right?
That's, that's the goal.
Does that mean it's going to take seven or eight years before we complete those?
That is correct. It will take, yeah.
When we will have other ones come up?
Right.
So that's, and I, trust me, I do understand how immense all of this is. I'm just wondering what we could do to help on city council, whether it's more people or more money or something? Because if you take seven or eight years to do the pedestrian master plan, you're going to have 50 projects coming up that are waiting by that time.
Right, right. No, it's accurate that, I don't know if I bring in four more people, if we'll be able to deliver those. I think a step at a time, if I can hire those two new engineers, and then maybe look next year to hire a principal or a city, assistant city engineer, then we look to put more folks under them.
Okay.
Because I also need a team or to help me manage the, the other folks. Because I also need a team to help me manage the other folks that are coming.
Well, I think we're in support of that, so we're trying to find out exactly what you need.
Right, right. And I can communicate through the city manager during the next fiscal year to how much more positions we need to fill.
Okay, okay. And I know, you know, one of the things, you list all the projects here. Do you, I don't see completion, estimated completion dates for, on page 63, you've got all the projects. I don't see a lot of.
Right. We didn't attempt to tell the council at this study session when we were completing projects. I have, and that's my goal, right? To build, when I build the staff, as I hire more staff, I'm able to then step back and actually try to program where we're going to deliver those projects. In the future, I want to probably get more software to help me manage the projects and be able to give you timelines. Each one of these projects actually is actually up on a GIS system, and we're, it's going to go live soon. In that GIS system, we're tracking when we think we're going to be under construction, and we'll be able to update that and give a sense of where we're at.
Okay. I think that would be extremely helpful. I'm just concerned that we're sort of, we're never going to fully catch up, and by the time you get through these 70 projects, we're going to be way behind again. I know, for instance, on the parks, Measure J, last year, there was money put aside for parks projects that was never really allocated. Has that been incorporated elsewhere?
I think it was mentioned today that they were allocating, and I could bring in the Parks and Rec Director to expand a little bit, but we have set aside the money. Correct, Chris?
It's in the community initiative.
Right. And the 3 million set aside for parks?
But are you going to be able to do those projects if you're not taking on any new ones, is what I'm saying? Those are set asides. We just have to wait? Because I think.
So I think it was mentioned that in the Parks and Rec Department, we're going to get project managers as well to try to help deliver those projects.
And that'll hope some of those get done.
Absolutely.
Okay, okay.
We're actively working on the design of those projects as well.
Okay. Because there's a significant amount of parks upgrades that we're going to need.
Yeah, between the Director of Public Works, the Director of Parks and Rec, the Engineering Department, everyone's trying to, is staffing up to deliver those projects.
Okay. And just as a side, because you brought up the tribe, and are we talking to them about helping with the fire station?
Mayor Protem, I don't think we've gotten to that point yet, but I've heard, I've heard that participation in the past, and I think it's entirely appropriate.
I know, I know at one point there was conversations, I'm not sure if they're continuing, but they certainly have land, I think. I think we were looking at Takuwitz Canyon for some of their land for the station. And I would sort of try to engage in those conversations as early as possible, since it's their fire station.
No, I think that's a terrific comment. We meet with them, you know, regularly, and they will be as interested as anybody will be in the success of building a new fire station, given all of their investment in the community as well, so.
Okay. I am interested also, one other question, in terms of staffing, do you, do you think we're being aggressive enough in our recruitment? Is there, I know a lot of it goes out on the regular services, but if we're actively trying to compete with the private sector.
We are actively looking on websites like the American Public Works Association, Society of Civil Engineers. So we are posting in those locations. We have an active recruitment that's been maybe going on 30 days. I think we only have three or four applicants.
Okay. I'm wondering if maybe we look into whether we need more aggressive recruitment on that, since this is sort of key to our city and our infrastructure?
The other thing, Mayor Protem, that I'll make note of is just a discussion with our HR department to do a comparison, and I don't know if Joel can tell us now about how our salary schedule compares with the engineers of other cities in the valley here, and are we falling behind a little bit or not? And so we'll, I'm going to make note to follow up with staff, and then we'll be reporting back to you.
And I would suggest also looking to see how the departments are structured, because it sounds to me like there's a lot put on Joel to manage everybody, and maybe a different structuring of, would get him more senior people to help, so he doesn't get stuck with all the management of it. But I think, and some of these other things like the, I just want to make sure you have all the resources you need to do this, because every one of these projects will come up, and Councilmember Middleton talked about the roads, and that's probably what we hear most often, is when is my road going to be finished? And I'm worried that our PCI will not be getting improvements over time.
Right. So just for the roads sake, we are, we're going to bring the pavement management program back. We are being very aggressive. I mean, I think we're one of the cities that is investing more in their roads than any other city. So we have a project every year, we're slurring every year. So I think as a city, we're doing excellent, and we're keeping up. The projects are coming, we're doing them every year. We're going to do a 9 million project with the new pavement management program that's coming up. So I think as far as the roads are concerned, we are aggressive in paving.
And just one question, the scaling up from six to nine million, does that, does it take a significantly more amount of your department's time if you're contracting it out? Is that right?
No. It's the same amount of effort.
Okay.
We just include more roads in what we're doing.
Okay. So that is something we should probably look at. I mean, new projects, obviously, are going to take up a lot more of your time to manage, but if it's just increasing existing ones.
Interestingly enough, the real small projects, the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program, the little project like that, they actually take a lot more time of our, you know, staff's time than the major projects.
Yeah.
Because the major projects, we have consultants, we're working with consultants along the entire, you know, process of a project. But when we get to the neighborhoods, where we take that same staff member that's working on a $30 million project, and then having to go work with the neighborhoods, it does take significant amount of time. So we're trying to balance that. But as we gear up, and if we lose the staff member that we have trained to work, then we have to start again. So that's just the nature of where we're at right now.
Just a question on the traffic calming and the pedestrian master plan. So we did, the last one was finished in '22 or '21?
They were both finished around the same time, and at the end of '21, I think.
So when will we do that again?
Well, the Local Road Safety Plan was a grant from Caltrans, so that we could do it, and we have to do it every four to five years. So we will be doing that in five years, or in the next four or five years.
Okay. But at the rate we're going, we're still going to be fixing the 37 that we have right now?
34 projects, correct.
Okay. All right. Sorry about that. Okay, I appreciate it. I know this is a lot, and I just want to make sure we have the resources to do this, because everything comes down to the infrastructure here. And so as we go into an uncertain economy, we should just try and make sure we get as much done earlier before it gets even more expensive. So thank you for all this great work. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Holstich.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you so much for all your work. I'm going to make comments instead of cross-examining you with questions to make my point. Yeah, I agree with Mayor Protem's comments. We're very far deep in the hole of this, you know, capital project that we have to do throughout the city, and it's hard, because our residents are constantly asking us for new capital projects. And so we have different incentives, or we have the same incentives, because we just want to serve the city, right? But we have so many needs, and it's just really hard to staff to those. And some of those are, we're an older city, and so we have so many aging capital infrastructure. You know, for me, it's like City Hall and outside of City Hall. I mean, there's so many things that are identified in that study showing, you know, poor, our poor quality or current status of so many of our projects. And so we're just so far down into this hole. So I appreciate Joel, because you've come and you've put a lot of structure to this that was messy before. And so we're just trying to dig ourselves out of this hole. And in one way, we never will, and right, and we'll just continue on. But I agree, because my incentives are to deliver projects to the community that they're asking for now, and they don't always understand it takes many, many years to get them even in the queue. So I've seen, I applaud your very small department's work. I think you've delivered excellent projects. I know we had a fun exchange last time, where I was like, can't you get more consultants? Can you contract some of this out? How do we make this easier? You know, because I am disappointed to see no more new projects, because we do have so much work to do. And I share the concerns that if we're doing 10 a year and we have 70 right now, you know, are we going to be seven years out for, you know? That's not the exact math that you're describing, because many are in progress, right? But just that same concern. So, and this is urgent too, right? Like, the time passing is just urgent. Like, if you have a toddler, and then it takes 10 years to get a library, and they're, you know, aged out, people are aging out of the needs that we have. So I would just urge the city manager and Joel and your departments to come together. Like, is there creative thinking we can use? You know, when we needed police officers, we did a 30,000 hiring bonus. You know, we're going to have to have a lot more police officers if we continue to have bad intersections that need work, that are causing more traffic accidents, right? So like, how can we get ahead and be really proactive from the city council perspective of supporting your work? Because we don't want you to burn out, and your staff to burn out, because we know you're working really hard, and we appreciate that, and our residents are demanding, and they demand we all work very hard. I heard you talk about, I care also about the efficiency, and we've talked a lot about this in our agency. So how do we spend our time, since we know we have limited resources and limited people power? What are those projects that are most important and really prioritizing? So that it isn't the very, very small projects that might not make a huge impact in pedestrian safety? For example, if that's taking a large percentage of your time and your staff time, personally, I'd rather it go to the more impactful projects. So I know it's a balance, and we want to deliver to the community, but I'd love some efficiency thinking around how to plan priorities. And I think we can support you, right? If it's a change of the neighborhood program, let's bring that forward. You know, I think our residents want progress, and then sometimes we pick easier, quicker progress. People are really happy to get that intersection at the corner, or whatever it is. But what they really want is like to reduce pedestrian deaths. And so sometimes it's harder to do that more impactful change, but I'm just, would love to support it. And I think council's saying, we'd love to support you doing that creative work around how to solve this problem. And I think some of those comparison figures would be really helpful, because we do get questions about other cities. You know, obviously, other cities are newer cities, they don't have the aging infrastructure, they are not full-service cities, so they're only doing a few, and they don't have all the fire department, the fire stations and police, you know, all of that. So that kind of comparison would be helpful, as we explain to the community how well we're doing and how we are delivering. But we do have a problem to solve, which is that hole. And you didn't say, but you've said it before, for the public following along, the numbers are the year that it was implement, it was initiated.
Initiated, correct. That's.
And then the number, the following number is the number on the list from that year.
For that particular fiscal year, yes.
So you can see, and obviously, of extremely complex projects. I would not be able to do your job with a wastewater treatment plant, and all the things they have going on that need significant capital dollars. But, you know, just looking at this list through city manager and Joel of, you know, how far behind we are in some of these projects, and how to move them forward more quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any additional questions regarding capital projects? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And so, Mayor and council members, I think the next portion of this program is going to be talking a little bit about how we can move some of these projects along a little faster, which is why we set it up this way. So, Chris?
Thank you, Scott. Yeah, so I want to introduce Suzanne Harrell. She is the city's financial advisor. She's with Harrell and Company Advisors. She's been with the city for 30 years? Wow, 30 years. So she's been a part of every debt issuance, or debt that we have in our books today, with the exception of the pension obligation bonds, I believe. So she's here to talk a little bit about debt capital projects, give us an overview of financing. So with that, Suzanne?
Well, it's nice to see some of you again, Mayor, and members of the council, and it's nice to meet some of you for the first time. So this presentation today is really kind of all about the bonds, you know, no trouble. I'm just going to go. Well, you know, it couldn't be Guardians of the Galaxy, so I'm really disappointed I didn't think of that first. So the first part of the presentation is really going to focus on the first four items, which is kind of a refresher course for some of you about municipal bonds, and how you use municipal bonds, and how you issue municipal bonds. And some might be new information for some of the newer council members. And then we'll talk about kind of some financing options, some, you know, techniques that we use to structure your debt, and two of your kind of important projects that have been mentioned tonight, the fire station, or the fire headquarters, and the library. So typically, we use municipal bonds to fund CIP and other important economic development and quality of life projects. So to do that, you have kind of three options. You can do pay-as-you-go, which you do a lot with your Measure J and your street program. You can use intergovernmental revenue, like grants, which you're doing for some of your library expenditures. And then you can bar, which is issuing municipal bonds. By issuing municipal bonds, you, you know, bonds provide a long-term financing for capital with a very long useful life. Think about your house. You don't typically pay cash for your house, or save up cash to buy a house. You typically get a mortgage, so that you can get into the house and enjoy it for the 30 years that you're paying for it. So in this case, you know, that, bonds would be appropriate for something like your fire station, number one. I'm calling it fire station number one, but maybe it's fire headquarters. And the library upgrade. So cities have two kinds of municipal bonds that they typically use to fund general fund type projects. So this is not airport or wastewater treatment plant, things like, that have their own revenue sources, but just typical general fund projects. One are general obligation bonds. These are secured by a property tax levy, they're voter-approved. The city has no general obligation bonds. You'll probably remember seeing them for the college has some general obligation bonds, and the school districts have GEO bonds. Typically, cities borrow by issuing what we call lease revenue bonds. And so the lease revenue bonds are issued by a city's financing authority, and they're secure, the payment is secured by lease payments that the city pays to the financing authority to lease various city assets. It's, the lease payments are subject to annual appropriation, and therefore, they're, they don't violate any state constitutional debt limits. And you can allocate, although the general fund is responsible for the payment, you can allocate the payment to other funds. You do this right now with your Measure J fund. It contributes to the downtown revitalization project bonds that were issued originally in 2012, and refinanced a couple of years ago. And again, you have used this financing technique for many, many years, as most cities in California have. So it's tried and true. So to issue the lease revenue bonds, the debt process is, as I mentioned, the lease revenue bonds are issued by the financing authority, the financing, the city's financing authority, board of directors is the same as the city council members. To authorize the bonds, there's approval by resolution by both the authority and the city council. And if it's a new project, it requires a public hearing. And then it's approximately a 60-day process from that point to, between getting the city councils to consider and approve the project, getting through the credit rating process, structuring the bonds, marketing the bonds, selling the bonds, and funding the project. It's a total of about 60 days. And then this is a list of just the financing participants that have worked on most of your financings for many years. You've got a bond counsel, municipal advisor, an underwriter, disclosure counsel, a trustee, you've worked with S&amp;P as your rating agency, and so forth. So I thought this might be interesting to you, to see kind of what interest rates are today. So the city doesn't, you know, interest cost is the most significant cost factor in any borrowing. And interest rates vary based on your credit rating and how many years to maturity it is. So the city doesn't really have that much control over its interest rate in terms of, you know, your credit rating is double A, and that's going to, you know, cost a certain amount of interest. The only thing you really have control over is the length of time you want to pay it back, because if you want to pay something back over 10 years, obviously, the interest rate is lower than if you're going to pay something back over 30 years. And when we, when we look at kind of the structure and the example I give you, you can see how I've kind of merged the whole, should we pay back over 10, or should we pay back over 30, you know, in as an example of, you know, how you're, how you might fund some of your infrastructure projects. But I thought, again, this might be helpful to see, you know, how much does a million dollars of bonds, what's the debt service on that? What's the annual payment? Over 10 years, it'd be 115,000 a year for 10 years. Over 30 years, the interest rate's higher, but the debt service is obviously lower. Other financing costs in addition to interest is something that we call cap, that we call capitalized interest. So during the construction of any asset, the city is prohibited from making these lease payments that we, that I mentioned that secure the debt service on the bonds. So you're prohibited from making those lease payments because you have to have use and occupancy of the facility that you're leasing. So in order to deal with that limitation, there's a couple of ways you can fund your project that needs capitalized interest. You can use an existing asset because you already have use and occupancy of that, and so you can issue the bonds and make lease payments for that, that property, even though you're gonna spend the bonds on another project. In that case, you'd start paying debt service right away. If you, you can borrow to pay interest during the construction period. So you can add to the financing, say, two years or two and a half years of interest costs, and that will kind of pay for itself during the construction period. You can also set aside funds that you have on hand in advance to pay, to pay interest during that, during the construction period. So there's kind of three ways you can deal with the capitalized interest requirement. And again, how much capitalized interest depends on how long the construction is and, you know, what the lease asset that you're, are you building it? Are you going to, you know, use an existing asset? And then it also depends on when do you want the city to start making lease payments? It may, you know, depending on the debt service that you already have, do you want to start paying right away? Do you, you know, do you want to start paying a year after the project or the building is, is complete? So there's a lot of factors that go into how we determine your capitalized interest and how we fund it, and it's all depending on the city's financial goals. Some other financing costs are cost of issuance, which are bond counsel, municipal advisor and the other people that you need to help you issue the bonds, and those are generally fixed fees based on the size of the bonds and they range from, you know, about 1% to 1 and 1/2% of the size of the bonds, depending on how big it is. Obviously, the larger the size, the less the percentage. And then there can be a debt service reserve fund required. It's usually equal to one year's debt service. We, they set it aside with a trustee in case you have financial difficulties. You don't, aren't actually required to have that for your current general fund financings because you have a double A credit rating. There were times in the past where you had less than a, you had an A credit rating and we would actually have to borrow money and set it aside for that. But because of your current credit rating, you don't have to do that. So that's a cost you get to avoid. So this part of the presentation kind of just deals with, you know, how you can structure your debt going forward to, you know, make the most of your financial situation in terms of this fire station and library. So I thought I'd start out with what your existing bond and lease debt service is. Now, principal amount, you have about $140 million of bonds outstanding, but about $100 million of that is gonna be paid off within 10 years, and that's, that's truly significant. So you can see, I show the existing debt service, I show how much we talked about, you know, is being paid for Measure J, so the net general fund cost. So you can see down in 2035, 36, the last item there, that's the last payment on the convention center expansion financing. After that, you don't have any bonded debt. And I think the year before, that's when the, the downtown revitalization project bonds mature. That's why it goes down like that. So what I wanted to do is kind of just create two debt service scenarios for you, just so you can get a feel for how, you know, the different options for structuring that we're gonna look at depending on what your goals are. So for my example here, I said, well, let's, what happens if we issue bonds in 2024 and we want $50 million for the project fund, but the project's a two-year cap, two-year construction period, so we're gonna, we're gonna use one of those techniques for funding capitalized interest. We're gonna take 5.4 million of funds on hand, set it aside to pay interest on the bonds during the construction period. And for this example, I used your Measure J fund. Bonds will be 30 years and then Measure J would contribute the full debt service until those convention center bonds are, are paid off. Then I did a 2025 series. So in 2025, you might issue $20 million for the library project. And again, two-year construction period, so we've got two and a half years of capitalized interest. We usually go six months beyond the construction for, in case some, you know, some delay happens during the construction period. Again, 30 years, but in this case, Measure J is gonna contribute 50% of the debt service until the Measure J tax expires. So this chart kind of maps out what the outcome of those assumptions are. So the blue is your existing debt service and you can see it ends in 2035, 36. And then in order to keep your debt service kind of level with where it is now, not increase it, not increase the general fund's contribution, you know, you can see the orange is what's gonna be funded by the Measure J in this, in this example. And then the green bars are, the, the dark green is the 2024 series and the light green is the, the 2025 series. So in this case, you know, the general fund net new debt service would be $4.5 million a year, and then the Measure J would be about $3.8 million contribution a year. Again, and this is just kind of one example of how we structure your debt and, you know, how we look at what you, what you're paying now, what you can afford to pay, how to move the debt service to where you can afford to pay it, which is obviously out after 2035, So that was my brief presentation on bonds, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions from council? Mayor Protem?
You just said that the interest rates are basically set and there's not a lot that we can do about them, right? But didn't we refinance some of the debt a few years ago when it went down?
Oh, yes. When I mean it's set, when you issue the bonds, the rates are gonna be whatever they are at that time, whether, if you're borrowing for 30 years, in my example, they would be 4% if you had a double A credit rating.
Okay.
They would be 2.5%, 5% if you borrowed for only 10 years. You can't really impact that.
Okay.
Interest rate when you, when you're selling the bonds, except by shortening or lengthening the maturity.
Okay. But should things change in the market, we could refinance?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay. And are we at a higher point now than your estimate that it'll be going down?
Yes. These rates are probably the highest that we've seen since maybe 2019, and those rates did take into account the, the Fed action last week. So I, I updated the rates after the Fed action last week.
Okay.
You know, there's a, I don't know, 50% consensus that the Fed won't raise rates.
What do you think?
By June. I, I think they, I, I think they're, they're done for Ju, until June.
Okay. And do you see them anywhere in the future, are they coming back down or not?
I, I think it's hard to see, I think it's hard to see that in, in the short term.
Okay. Now, the fact that you've got this for Measure J, doing, funding the debt service for the next 10, 11 years while Measure, till Measure J expires, does the fact that it expires affect anything at all or just where we're getting the money to service it from?
It affects where you're getting the money to service it from and it affects how much you can afford to pay. So that's why we're not structuring an enormous increase in general fund contributions once the Measure J expires. We're trying to pay down some of it so your general fund ends up with kind of a level debt service out at the end.
Okay. Well, I mean, this, this certainly seems to make sense for things like the fire station, the library, because it, it is concerning that prices keep going higher and higher and, and if we can get this done now, that's not just the financial benefit, but the social benefit of having these done quickly is, maybe we can have a library done before your kid age is out. So I, I think this is a great, you know, idea and I would support it. I do want to mention two things that it reiterates, and I won't ever stop saying this, but the Measure J, we should start thinking about how it gets renewed. I know it's 11 years off, but this is the first time you actually see where it cuts off in, in a fund, and that is going to be a 10-year project to make sure that people are aware of how useful Measure J is and what the purpose is and why it needs to be voted back again. And we don't want to get too close. And the second point I will make is, since the Measure J is funded by a sales tax, that it also is an importance to focus on economic development and that we have that sales tax. Measure J started out 8 million, it's now 20 million a year. That has to keep at that level or go up and we can't get it back to the 8 million that we used to have. So that's my comment to the city manager, but you're, since it was part of your presentation, I'm saying it anyway. But thank you very much. That was great and very helpful. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Holstich?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you for the presentation. Really appreciate your service to our city. Thank you. So I agree with your comments. Thank you for saying that. So knowing that Measure J will sunset, though our intention, you know, we need to discuss as a community what our intention is with that, but knowing that, my understanding is that the sales tax, that if it were to sunset, the county might be able or another agency might be able to do an initiative to get those sales tax dollars. And originally, when we were campaigning for Measure J and having those conversations, our residents really wanted it to stay in Palm Springs. We have such a small window there to work with, with sales tax dollars and directing them to Palm Springs versus like the overall county or another agency, which also have been looking at sales tax measures, I mean, increasing sales tax. So no, thinking that we might want to renew it, I would also love to plan what we need to do if it impacts our bonding capabilities to extend it and when we could do that and what that would look like. That would be obviously a public process and a vote by the public. When I joined city council about five years ago, our, our city manager at the time said that we were sort of at capacity for our debt and our bonding, and so that's why I at least have been looking at financing and saving funds for Measure J and other where, since we have used significant capacity to bond for other projects, right? So I think, I'm sorry, I'm not a finance person, I'm a lawyer, so my brain was trying with all the information that you did, and I think one of your graphs was about that. But could you explain in detail, just with specificity, our bonding capacity and how much capacity we have to add? Like, are we able, gonna be able to do two project, two large projects, like a library and a fire station? What does that actually look like?
Well, as I mentioned, your, you know, I, I wouldn't recommend increasing the general fund contribution towards debt service because that's a, you know, that's a significant amount of money. It's about $10 million a year. But Measure J is, I mean, I almost view that as one-time money outside the general fund. The other thing is, as I mentioned, you know, in 10 years, you're gonna be paying down $100 million worth of principal amount of your bonds. And that does free up, you know, a significant amount of bonding capacity that you didn't have five years ago because you were still in the, your debt service was going up phase and now you're kind of, your debt service is, is going down phase. And so that does give you some additional bonding capacity.
Thank you. And it'd be great if we could get a copy of that presentation and so we could analyze those numbers and possibly have you back if we need to discuss it further at another meeting. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Middleton?
Yeah, thank you. And I appreciate the comments of my colleagues on these issues. Interest rates, as you said, are at a, at a high right now. Now, if they do go down, we can refinance, but there's going to be costs associated with I think what we're looking at is what's the trade-off of the increase in additional construction costs that we're going to see over time versus the advantages of getting in now and paying that higher interest rate. What would be helpful to me in making a decision as to what's the right trade-off would be to have some comparative reports on how our indebtedness compares with other municipalities, most particularly municipalities that have tourism-based economies such as, as ours. And I'm intrigued by these opportunities, but I really do want to take and, and see more. We've talked about the criticality of Measure J and going back to the public to make it permanent, but that is also facing the headwind next year, that we're likely to have the California Business Roundtable Initiative on the ballot, which could, if it's passed, and God forbid that it be passed, that we would have a significant change in what it would take to, to be able to pass such an initiative.
Any other comments, questions? All right. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I think we're on to our airport, is that correct?
Thank you, Suzanne. She's a very valuable partner to the city. We really appreciate her work for us, so thank you. On here, I'm gonna do a new update for the airport and I'm gonna turn it over to the experts, Harry and Victoria. So just want to introduce the airport's budget here. You can see fiscal year '23, '24, and '25, '23 being the first column, and, you know, there's no doubt that the growth is, is looking to happen with the revenue being at 53.6 million in '23, then 62.5 in '24, which is a 17% jump, and then 69.1 in '25, which is almost an 11% jump. And then, which, going down to the expense side, you get even further into the increases because of all the initiatives and the growth the airport has experienced and, and is going to experience. So with 33.9 million in fiscal year '23, 48.8 in '24, that's a 44% increase, and then 60.4 million, which is a 24% increase over '24. So significant growth, significant revenue growth, significant expense growth. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over so Harry and Victoria can give you a lot more detail in what those numbers mean.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Mayor Protem and Council. Couple things. So the budget that you see in front of you is a reflection, a direct reflection of the new lease that we negotiated with the airlines. Historically, we'd been under a residual agreement with the airlines. That rate structure has since changed, which then changed the way we applied those revenues to our operating costs. So we've budgeted, we're anticipating long-term growth of about 6% year-over-year with the airport, but for this fiscal year and for, or for the coming fiscal year or next fiscal year, we're looking at about 1.5% growth. We wanted to be a little conservative given the economic environment right now. On the operating side, obviously, we're asking for upwards of 40 positions. We really took a look at what the other airports of our size and our caliber were doing. We're looking at staffing levels of about 100, between 140 and 220 positions for those airports. So at 69 FTEs, we fell well short of that for Palm Springs. On the capital side, we benefited a lot from a lot of the infrastructure funding from the BIL, infrastructure law a couple of years ago. So in addition to our AIP funding, we get about $4.1 million year-over-year in entitlement funds in addition to discretionary funding. We also benefited from an additional $5.2 million for the last couple of years in BIL funds, and that'll continue for the next three years. So Victoria will dig into those numbers a little bit more, but I just wanted to kind of set the stage for where we're heading.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Barrett. Good evening, council members, Mayor Protem and Mayor. My name is Victoria Carpenter. I'm the Airport Administration Manager for the Palm Springs International Airport. On behalf of the Palm Springs International Airport, I'm pleased to report that our estimated fiscal year '23 actuals show a surplus of 19.7 million, which represents a significant 24% increase compared to the fiscal year '23 revised budget. 24% increase compared to the fiscal year '23 revised budget. This surplus is a result of our diligent efforts to improve our operations and generate revenue. The surplus is estimated to continue through fiscal year '24 and fiscal year '25, ending fiscal year '24 at a surplus of $13.7 million, and ending fiscal year '25 at a surplus of $8.6 million. Year-over-year, you will see a decrease to the airport net surplus due to the capital and operating expenses associated with the airport's planned capital improvement projects and operational expenses. To mitigate the impacts of these expenses on the net surplus, the airport is exploring additional revenue streams. One of these revenue streams is the result of the implementation of our master plan, which outlines a comprehensive strategy to optimize the airport's resources and maximize, maximize revenue potential. This plan includes identifying the best use of vacant property and developing it to generate additional revenue for the airport. As a result of our successful financial performance and the need to continue to beautify the airport and the expanding operational needs, we are requesting an additional 49 positions, as Mr. Barrett stated, over the next two fiscal years to help address passenger capacity and operational constraints, some of which include three fire captains, a project manager, and sanitation representatives. These new positions will enable us to provide better service to our passengers and to enhance our overall operations, to include improving the cleanliness of the airport. Moreover, we have several robust capital projects planned for fiscal year '24 and '25, which will enable us to improve and beautify our facilities and infrastructure to better accommodate the needs of our passengers. Slide 16 shows the airport total passengers on a fiscal year basis with the projected fiscal year budgets '24 and '25 escalating at a conservative 1.5% growth rate. One of the primary reasons for our revenue and expenditures growth is the increased passenger traffic we have experienced over the past year. Despite the challenges posed by the pandemic, the airport has seen a steady increase in passenger numbers as people resume their travel plans. Historically, our airport total passengers for fiscal year '19 was 2.5 million. Then after the pandemic, fiscal year '22 ended with over 2.8 million passengers. We are anticipating ending fiscal year '23 with approximately 3.2 million passengers, a 16% increase when compared to fiscal year '22. This increase in traffic has directly translated into increased revenue from airline rates, parking rates, rental car fees, and other related non-airline fees, as well as the increases in the operational and capital expenditures. Revenues continue to increase as passenger traffic increases over fiscal year '24 and '25. Total operating revenues for fiscal year '24 are budgeted at $62.4 million, an increase of $15.4 million or 33% over the fiscal year '23 revised budget. The revenue reflects three sources: airline revenue of $21 million, non-airline revenue of $35 million, and non-operating COVID relief grant revenue of $6.2 million. Fiscal year '25 operating revenues are budgeted at $69 million, an increase of $6.6 million or 11%, of which $27.4 million represents airline revenue and $41.8 million is from non-airline revenue. Airline revenue is expected to rise by $16.7 million in fiscal year '24 as a result of a newly negotiated airport use and lease agreement. Non-airline revenue is expected to increase by $4.9 million or 10% in fiscal year '24 as a result of car rental revenue, new retail and food and beverage concessions, and parking revenue. Non-operating revenue is expected to be exhausted by fiscal year '25, and that includes the COVID relief funds that are no longer going to be available in fiscal year '25. Total operating expenditures for fiscal year '24 are budgeted at $48 million, which address the airport's overall strategies, initiatives, initiatives, and mandated obligations, and reflect an increase of $13.6 million, 40% of the FY '24 operating expense budget from the FY '23 revised budget. In addition, FY '25 operating expenses are projected to increase by $4.1 million, 10% over the fiscal year '24 budget. This increase reflects the hiring of 27 new positions, a wage and salary increase required under the negotiated contract agreements. In addition, the non-personnel expenditure increase is primarily driven by contractual services and materials and supplies. For the record, I'd like to reflect a change in the staff report. The airport currently has a total of nine capital projects that are in progress. The staff report reflects seven. This includes the airport master plan, restroom renovation, common use and carpet renovation, baggage claim and baggage handling system design. The airport intends to pursue about 42.7 million in capital expenditures in fiscal year '24 and 96 million in fiscal year '25. In total, the airport will request about $86 million in federal grants to fund the capital expenses. Some projects to highlight during the upcoming years include zero emission buses, main terminal facade restoration, and HVAC infrastructure replacement. These projects will include the expansion of our terminal facilities, also upgrading our parking facilities, and implementing new technologies to improve our operations. These upgrades will not only improve our airport's functionality, but also its aesthetics. In addition to the physical upgrades, the airport's capital projects will now contribute to a 1% arts improvement to the airport. This program will fund public art installations that will enhance the airport's ambiance and provide an immersive experience for our passengers. In conclusion, we're proud of the progress we have made and we are committed to continuing our efforts to enhance our operations and provide excellent customer service to our passengers. And we want to thank the city council for your ongoing support. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Do we have some questions? Councilmember Holstich.
Thank you. Thanks for all your work on this. I think it really looks excellent. I appreciate that you're, aggressive might not be the right word, but aggressively investing in the airport. I think that's absolutely right. And so I really like the budget that's been presented and appreciate the investments and the focus on capital improvements and art and expansion opportunities. And I think that forward-looking vision is so needed at the airport, so really appreciate that. And I love what's been presented. I will just say, I keep asking, but I know we usually do like a five-year look back for revenue and passenger rates and those numbers. The last three or four years have been weird, and so I would appreciate just a longer perspective, especially because we have a cyclical tourism economy. And so, you know, we really have to think through 10 years and what those cycles look like as the economy, you know, ebbs and wanes and flows. And so I'd love just information as we think through predicting how those passenger levels will continue and/or if they'll rise, just that perspective. So I can look through that and we can work with our tourism partners and others to talk that through. But overall, I agree with your predictions and I'm excited for all the work that's happening at the airport. Thank you.
Councilmember Middleton.
All right. Thank you. Well, I'm excited as well. This looks very, very good. It's an ambitious plan and it's a necessary plan, but do you have the project management to be able to carry off this plan? And what is it going to take to get the project managers in place that we're going to need?
So that's a very good question. We're dealing with the same problem that Joel has right now with, you know, retaining talent and hiring talent and figuring out how to recruit talent. We don't have those resources in place right now. We are working on contracts as well as hiring staff support for that, but they're currently not in place now.
I think that that's really the critical question that I have is the assurance that we're going to be able to execute on these plans, and that's going to take the talent in order to be able to do so.
Councilmember, I might add, that was one of the reasons when we had discussions with our HR department of actually hiring an HR professional dedicated just to the airport to work on the filling of all of his positions. And Harry, just as similar as Joel mentioned, you know, as we look at anything and everything, can we contract out for engineers? Can we contract out for project managers? You know, kind of some of these one-off situations to kind of keep things moving quickly. I think any and everything is probably on the table for us to consider.
So one of the issues, not to bring up things that have gone wrong, but we made a massive investment in baggage handling and found that it needed to be much bigger by the time it opened. So that's a learning experience, a rough learning experience, but it certainly tells us, as we move forward with these plans, we need to be aggressive in terms of our imagination as to what the future demand is going to be and make sure that we're building excess capacity in order to be able to handle that.
I can assure you, we are doing that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Holstich.
Thank you. So I forgot my question as I was so excited about your plans. Can we talk about maintenance? So I saw maintenance is like 2% of the budget. I think the overall budget swells, so it reduces in proportionality for the second year in this budget. So you could just talk about, is that sufficient? Do we need more attention to maintenance? I know we're dealing with the same issues with other city facilities of aging infrastructure and just aging. And thank you, you know, I know we're already moving forward on the carpet and a lot of those other kind of aesthetic issues. But could you just talk about how you see maintenance and if more, you know, how you estimated that and if more is needed?
Well, a lot more is needed. So we tried to take a balanced approach to this. So we looked at the personnel resources and what we could operationally do on a day-to-day basis, and we tried to balance the team to make sure that we had the skills and talent in place to handle the day-to-day. But we're also looking at this from a capital development perspective, and we're trying to capture those things, a lot of the delayed maintenance or the infrastructure deficit that we've had in the past. We're trying to capture those in new development as we go along. So we're trying to combine those two as we move forward. Frankly, that's going to take a little bit of calibration from time to time. We do have a lot of delayed maintenance on the airport, but we're working through those processes and on a daily basis, really, as we start planning out the future of the airport.
Thank you. So in our table, when it says ground maintenance, that's just the maintenance? Can you describe what that category includes?
I'm sorry, ground maintenance?
It says ground maintenance and then there's other sort of operational costs.
So grounds would refer to our landscaping and cleanup of the facilities. We have a full maintenance team in place responsible for the terminal and the airfield. And the idea behind the additional staffing is that we would start to compartmentalize that maintenance division so that we can focus those resources specifically on those areas. And we've also not only taken some of our maintenance personnel and trained them up on some of the things that we historically have contracted out, but we've also implemented new contracts to help support some of those other areas that we have neglected in the past.
Great. Thank you. It would be helpful for me, I don't know, I don't want to create a lot of extra work, but if it is for staff, like just comparable information too, so we can know. I'm sure you're bringing us forward best practices. That's why we have you as experts, but we are not experts. And so it'd be helpful to have just, you know, what is that percentage we should be spending on maintenance and, you know, comps there? And then just to flag one other thing, I spoke with the chairman of the tribe for Agua Caliente Band of Quea Indians, and obviously the airport also welcomes people to their land and their reservation. And so I think we talked before about this, but they're interested potentially in adding art or a welcome sign or other information too. And I think that would be one, a unique opportunity to bring to our airport as well. So I believe that you're working with the tribe, but that'd be fantastic to bring that in through your capital planning projects.
Right. We're already working on that. And I actually have a meeting with the chairman, I believe, this week or next week. I can't remember.
Great. Thank you.
Councilmember DeHart.
Thank you. Question on the staffing. So we got 22 in, 22 new positions coming up in the first year, and then we're looking at 27 for '25. Somewhere along the line, I saw, I thought you had a plan of 60-some-odd staff. Is this the, is this the number that we're, that's going to get you what you need?
No, we've never been up to 60. It may have been 60 with our current vacancies.
Oh, got it.
So we were still backfilling some positions, but we've never requested 60.
Okay. Excellent. And then we've got 38% increase in car rental fees, 30% increase in parking fees, and 17% increase in airline fees. Are those, how much of those percentages are coming from increased customer traffic versus increased costs that we're going to be raising the price?
A lot of it is coming from the increased passenger traffic, but what we did during, at least the height of the pandemic, is we kept rates neutral for everybody for those three years. So historically, we hadn't raised things like parking fees. We did raise the CFC for the rental car companies, but that was the only rate that we raised for them. And then we kept the rates flat for the airlines as well. So we're actually trying to play catch-up on some of that stuff, and most of the tenants are aware that that was coming. They benefited during the pandemic, but now it's time to true up on that.
And that, the HR position, the HR director position, is that counted in these numbers or it's something that we're going to get added in?
I believe it's in those numbers.
All right. Excellent. So the staffing is what you need to achieve your, your vision for the airport?
Frankly, we needed it five years ago. So, yes.
Okay. That's all you had.
Thank you. Mayor Protem.
Can I ask, what's the status of looking at customs and international flights to the airport?
Couple things, actually. So the first is, we are underway on an FIS feasibility study. It's broken into two phases. The first phase was through Visit Greater Palm Springs, so they're kind of coordinating that with a consultant. And then the second phase turns over to the airport to figure out how we would implement that here at Palm Springs. So that, we're looking another six or seven months before we really have some reports on that. But behind the scenes, what we've been doing is working with Customs and Border Protection and talking to them about our plans, as well as speaking with not only our incumbent airlines, but potential new airlines to serve the markets, both in Canada and potentially in Mexico for the airport.
Best-case scenario, if you had your way, how far away would that be?
Four years.
Impressive. Okay. I want to ask a little bit about physical space. You could bring in on, I guess, 40, 50 positions. Do you have the physical space for everybody?
We've been space planning this entire time.
Okay.
So we did create, we got really creative, frankly, in our offices, and then we also have some buildings that are underutilized that we're bringing up for additional personnel.
And how, how risky is it with, that you, like an airline like Southwest would decide to leave at some point and that would significantly change our revenue stream? Is that?
You'd never know what's going to happen in the airline industry. I mean, between mergers and market changes. One benefit of having signatory airlines is that they're committed for the length of that agreement.
That's just five years?
Five years. So regardless of what happens, they owe the city of Palm Springs for those five years. Our non-signatory carriers are a little bit different situation. They're on a month-to-month agreement, but right now, most of the airlines are reporting really, really strong revenues. So I don't see a situation, right now at least, where we would see any of the airlines pull out.
So most, most of the main ones are signatory? I think it was just JetBlue that's not?
Yeah, we have seven signatory carriers and then the remainder, the other five are non-signatory.
And out of that, the biggest one is JetBlue? Is that right?
Of the non-signatory?
Yeah.
Yeah, JetBlue.
Okay. All right. The other thing I was just going to mention is that as we increase the number of flights, one of the things we hear a lot from constituents is noise. And so we're obviously expanding that more, and I would be proactive in addressing the community on, when they see this expansion and this growth and everything, that you are addressing the noise proactively. I don't know what can be done, but certainly if there's the military good neighbor policy and other things, that has come up several times. I also want to ask, who at the airport is in charge of the design in terms of aesthetics? Is there? Is there any one person?
That would be me, right now.
So I would suggest, as you're looking at this arts fund, and we're looking at potentially the tribe having a welcoming, and I know we have a new logo, and we're going to obviously have to work within spacing things, that, and we're going to have new concessions, and we're going to have a lot of different stuff happening. I know this week, we're going to see about new kiosks. And Councilmember Holstich talked about carpet, although I like the Trotso floors better. I would look at having somebody who is specifically charged with, with the design, and your, the design, I don't mean physical design, but aesthetics of the airport. Because it really is, we have the most beautiful airport, and it's the most wonderful experience. And as we expand, we need to make sure we don't lose that design aesthetic that was there. And it's obviously going to be a big challenge in a small airport as we have grown so significantly. So if you want an extra person, I would push for that too. So, but I think that is something to look at. Because managing an arts fund is going to be very hard to do it and making the decisions in context of all the other design elements that are going on. So I would just keep that in mind. But it's very exciting to see how everything's growing. And operationally, it's really seemed to handle the expansion very well. Just a few unavoidable glitches, but, and it's amazing to see you come out of the pandemic so strong. So thank you and the whole team for this, thank you.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, Councilmember Holstich.
Thank you. If I can ask a follow-up. So we used a brand consultant to create the logo. Or do we have ongoing brand support for the airport brand? Or is that being done in-house? Or what does that look like to, to work on the airport branding and overall design and aesthetic, like Mayor Protem added?
The logo itself and its application, we do have ongoing support for that. So we're working with the consultant right now, actually. In fact, they presented me with some business cards today on those applications and where those uses might be and how we would use them. In terms of what Mayor Protem was referring to, in terms of the design standards of the facility, we will need to bring somebody in for that, whether it's someone on staff or contract out. But we're open to doing that.
Thank you. I think those are really good points and really should be considered as we grow. We need to preserve the unique character and make sure it's on-brand. One other question about, if I can, I just have you, sorry, I got excited about the airport. From all this work, composting and all of our sort of green purchasing work, we heard about how it's, how you're, have it planned for your capital improvement with the buses and things like that. But is the airport required to do composting? Do we have a plan for that to align with the city policies?
We have required that of our concessionaires. We are still working on developing additional plans for the rest of the airport. So we've been working with LP and Sustainability. She's actually on our master plan committee. And we're working those into our plans right now.
Great, I think that's really important as we talk about brand and being a green and sustainable city. I think travelers look for that, so thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Really appreciate your work. City manager, it's back to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, so that concludes our portion of the program. Obviously, we're available for any and all additional questions that councilmembers might have. The one thing I will say is tomorrow, we'll have all of these presentations on our finance website for the public to look at and review. I don't think that should be a problem. And so, yes.
Great, thank you very much. At this time, we'll go ahead and, if there's councilmembers that have other questions or comments, we can have a more general discussion about this. I do want to just start by mentioning that I think it is really important that we are completing current projects. As we saw, there is that long list of CIP. And so many of those people have been waiting for, for a long time. So I do agree that being able to really prioritize, make a, really prioritize those projects, but also the order in which they're completed, I think would be very helpful. Anything that we can do to support that process is also important. Because there are projects that will come up in the future. I am concerned about overloading our staff when we do know that there is a long list. I'm more interested in how we can finish these at a faster pace before adding new ones, but being mindful that there are new things that should be coming relatively soon. And when I say that, I'm saying another five, five years. And I also want to just mention that I share the concerns regarding Measure J and the need to really begin doing more outreach to residents about the impact of Measure J. And thinking about our next crop of voters, right? We, I, when I went to Visit Almonte Elementary School and talked to fifth graders, they had questions about taxes and infrastructure. It was really impressive. And in the next 10 years, they're going to be voters. So how do we really come up with some kind of comprehensive plan that maybe the Measure J Commission might be interested in assisting with? To talk to our young voters, our soon-to-be voters, rather, as well as our current voters about the different projects that are, that are going on so that we aren't in a position to be worried that we won't have any of this revenue coming in in ten years from now? So I really appreciate Mayor Protem raising this several times now. All right, Councilmember DeHart, I saw your hand up.
City manager, how long have you been working with the city now? How many weeks?
Eight, eight weeks.
Eight weeks. Eight weeks, and I just, I say thank you for putting together and working with our staff to really put together a comprehensive, the comprehensive budget and allowing us this opportunity for the study session. Because I think it's, a lot of work has gone into this, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate the fact that even eight weeks only, you were able to work with our team and get that done. So thank you all for putting the energy into making it happen. I, and I know a lot of conversation today was not specifically related to today's budget. It's very forward-thinking, a lot of, a lot of hopes and ideas and wishes for the future. When will we, what's, what's the next step here? After, after today, we have this study session. Then when's the, when's the, what's the next step?
I think a couple of things will happen now for a while. We're, I was talking to our assistant city manager, she and I and others. We've been trying to take notes of some of your questions and follow-up things. We'll try and put some of that together, maybe in the form of a memorandum, and send it out to all of you so you can just see any follow-up that, that you might have requested that may generate some more discussion. And then, of course, our next meeting, I think can be pretty interesting. That will be with all of the members of the Measure J Commission that will be here. And I think that would be a good follow-up lively conversation with them about some of the things that our financial advisor has talked to us about. I've attended the last couple of Measure J Commission meetings. And I know some of the commission members there have expressed interest in trying to do bigger projects faster, quicker, and not get too bogged down in a lot of smaller things. So I think you may hear that from some of the, some of their commissioners about that when they get together. And potentially, we can ask Ms. Harrell to come back for that joint session and talk a little more about some of the financing strategies that we might talk about. One of the things that struck me, and I was going to ask her, we don't need to talk about it now. But as we look at, for example, the two big projects we've talked about today, the capital, the library project and the fire station project, I think she would agree with me that it doesn't, it won't make sense for us to go out to the bond market for trying to finance these two projects until we know exactly what the cost is going to be. And so particularly in the, I think the library has a little, has a little bit of a head start on the fire department and what some of their costs are going to be. But I don't think we should kid ourselves. It's going to take a good bit of time before the fire departments and working with our team is able to do a complete analysis of, of a deployment study about where are the locations that a new fire station could, could go? And then where are we able to acquire those, those properties? Is there any city land within those properties? I think you raised some terrific questions about the tribe and what kind of partnerships that we might be able to have in discussion with them. I think that's, there's some really valuable stuff there that could really streamline some of these projects. And, but it's going to, especially in the case of the fire department, it's going to take a good bit of time to get through, even we start tomorrow on all of the, we put a team together, we start the analysis, the deployment, hiring a consultant team to do all that, trying to work on all of the real estate angles related to it. It's just going to, and then seeing what's available and really engage in the community, potentially in a series of meetings about where a fire station should go. So in my mind, it's a much more complicated project than the, than the library project is. And so when our financial advisor is talking about Series 2024 bonds and Series 2025 bonds, you know, I was struck by trying to figure out, do we have to figure out how to identify the cost for both of those projects at the same time to go out to the market in one big issuance? Or is it okay to, to do a couple of different issuances? And there's costs with that. So there's a lot of thinking about that, that we would need to engage with them too. So, you know, there's a lot of stuff that we're, we're going to need to get after. And so it's a long-winded answer for, you know, all this stuff that we're going to have to do.
Yeah, well, I think both those projects, I think it's good for the community to hear what it takes to pay for a project like this. But also, you know, we've been working on both of them, it seems like, forever. Library may be more than the fire station. But I think quite a bit of work has been put into the fire station. And I know time and assessment, study's been done on location and distance. So I know, you know, we've, we've done, we've done some work on that location. So I'm glad to hear we're going to pick it up and keep going strong.
Great, do we have other comments or questions? Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you to the city manager and to everyone who was responsible for putting this together. This was a very impressive presentation. And I really do appreciate the organization and the work that went into it. It shows. And the fact that we may be finishing before nine o'clock also shows because we've got fewer questions, because you've anticipated what our questions were going to be. So thank you. As you start to move forward, just a couple of priority items that I would like to, to flag. But I think you've done a great job. The Mayor Protem has spoken about the need for increasing the economic support staffing that we have for our downtown merchants. And I want to wholeheartedly second his, his concerns there. We have a truly unique character of businesses in our community. And we need to be consistently supporting those businesses because they are what keeps this city running. I'm also concerned, though, that we increase our planning department staff. If we're going to build the kinds of housing that we want to be building in our community, we're going to need to have the staffing in the planning departments to, to get those approvals moved through. We want to be able to have a reputation that we are easy to do business with and that things happen quickly. And that's not always been the case. I am pleased by the movement to get to 4-0 staffing for the fire department. And I think it's prudent to space that over a couple of years. I've already flagged police staffing, but that's never going to go away as a critical issue. And I'm very pleased that we'll be debating and discussing a reserve policy. No reserve is ever adequate enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Always appreciate the comments about the reserve from Councilmember Middleton. Mayor Protem.
Yeah, I have a, I have a number of questions and then some comments. Is there an increase in our communications budget staffing? Amy here, and I'm just mentioning this because I see how often all of our departments have to communicate things that probably would save a lot of time if, if we had some, you know, them on a website. And I mentioned QR codes in the parks and proactive communication to constituents, which can't have one person do all of that. So do we have enough in that department?
Well, we have a chief communication officer position that we're recruiting for right now.
Okay.
And we concluded one search, but we want to, we're going to go back out for a further search on that. So.
I would also make sure that we have good website improvement. There is so much information that is very hard to find. And again, it just, the amount of staff's time, I can see, because it all comes to us as well, that is taken where you feel like it could be in one place for them to know would save a lot of time. So if there's an expense for that, I am all for it. I have some other questions specifically on, on the, on the budget and the expenditure summary. I don't know if I can ask Chris, but on page, on page 30, under the homeless program? Hope I'm looking after the same thing.
Go ahead and state your question, though, Mayor Protem.
Same, there is no money for the homeless program in 2425 draft budget. Right?
Oh, we'll probably have to take a look at that, Mayor Protem. I think that might be just where all the grant funds are. And there's no personnel expenses or any other type of expenses in that line item, other than grants. But we'll take a look at that.
Do we have to look at more budgeting, more money from somewhere for this?
Possibly.
Okay. On the park, I guess I might also a question for the parks. The parks maintenance, which I guess we had 5.8 budgeted this year. We're only going to spend 5.2, and then it's going up to 6.2 and 6. Do we, and it's only going up to 6.2. Is that enough money for our parks maintenance, maybe? Funds, I don't know if she's here.
We can take a look at the detail on that too and provide you a little bit more about what is in the budget and what the growth is related to. I know there's some significant contractual expenses in that line item as well that are growing.
I'm saying I don't know if it's enough.
Oh, you don't know if it's enough?
Yeah, yeah. If it's, and we clearly need more maintenance in our parks. And I think, I just want to make sure, is that just because we've been behind in staffing that it'll be caught up? But that was something that I would push for. If we can look into that. And maybe just say, the same thing on page 50, you've got for the parking structure maintenance, is $180,000. Is that for both parking structures?
Yeah, again.
These are questions I guess I could have asked before, but I didn't, I didn't get this early enough. And the other question, I'll just ask the questions, you'll look later. So on the, on page 50 also, the community and economic development, that we had budgeted 5.8 million and went down. It's going down to 3.9 and back up to 6.5, where that fluctuation is? And then, I have some other minor questions, which I can ask outside of this. But I do want to raise an issue we brought up. This is to probably to the city manager, the housing and homelessness. And I mentioned this, having the budget there. Again, I think it is really essential, we look at the percentage of TOT for affordable housing. And because if we don't have this budget, we've got to look at a revenue source. And that is something that we should have coming up soon. And I think we need to actually look at an ongoing budget for housing. I know we've talked about developing existing city land. We've talked about buying new land. We've talked about a catalyst fund. We've talked about rezoning our, our shopping centers to have multifamily, multi-story housing. I think. I think we have to build 2,000 more homes by '29, I think, and we're, we're, we need to sort of really start investing in that now, and it's probably one of the top priorities in this city, and so this, and then also the ongoing funding for the navigation center, because I don't think that we've really thought out long-term how we're going to keep funding that in the absence of, of state and county grants, which hopefully we'll still get. But that's why we need to sort of build this in. And then this sort of ties in now, which I'm going to mention a couple of other things. The parks, I agree that we don't want to take off too much, but it is so important to all of our community, and, and we have dealt with a number of capital projects, but there are many more that are going to come up. We haven't, you know, we're going to hear from the dog park people again soon, the playground people, I shouldn't say playground people, the constituents who use the playgrounds, constituents who, the residents who use the playgrounds, and residents who use the dog park, you know, and the residents who use the swim center, and the residents who use the, the, the sports fields, and, and, you know, all have an important use of our parks, and I think we need to look at it. Even the residents who use our downtown amphitheater that doesn't have an AV system, that we need to sort of look at, like, how we actually invest so our community gets the most. I think we get very wrapped up in, in the tourists, which are obviously our economy, but it's really the residents we need to, to make sure. And so, along those lines, you've got housing, and then we've got economic development, and I know you've got a deputy director. I think we should look at whether it really makes sense to have housing and economic development in one department, or whether we expand it significantly, or whether we have a director of economic development, but we are, it is a huge job. I know we've just hired a central business administrator position. I don't know if that's going to expand beyond the central business, but if not, we do need somebody to handle the businesses in districts 1, 2, 4, and most of 5, which is not covered in central business. We also need to look at who is really responsible for ensuring we get this $50 million in TOT tax, and I think we're, we're very lucky to have the hotels who have continued to invest and advertise and manage their business, but this is our revenue stream that we really need to look at. And the same with the $35 million in sales and use tax. I mean, it's our local businesses that have done this, have made this happen. We are, at worst, going into a recession, at best, into uncertain times, and it really takes a focus to, I don't know, Chris, you said we had 29,000 business licenses in our city?
Yeah, something like that.
So, 29,000 business licenses. It seems to me like it would warrant some expanded support and help. Councilmember Holstich brought up the cannabis tax, which I think is an important issue, but more importantly, we as a city, if this is an industry we want, need to look at how we're going to keep it, how it's going to thrive and, and continue to maintain. It is not just the taxes, there's other issues that will go into it, as well as education part, the part of it. And, and we need to look at, make sure hotels keep up to, up to par in our local businesses. I also want to look at a database of our real businesses with these 29,000. I don't think, you know, we've had these issues come up with whether it's food delivery services or, or whatever, we should be able to immediately message all of our restaurants and get their opinion. We, we should know that, we should, we should know who are, you know, how many black-owned businesses, how many LGBT-owned businesses, how many minority, you know, Latina-owned businesses, Latinx-owned businesses. These are things that we really could use as our city, and we don't really have any, any of that. So, this is why I keep pushing for economic development, expansion, and focus, because half of our revenue is coming from our, our, our local businesses that need, we need to make sure that they stay and thrive and, and support over time. So, I will keep saying this until, like a dog with a bone. I do want to also support and make sure that we have our, our fire, we, you know, we get that up to speed and the new station, as well as the police. I do have a question, do we have the police staff to man the downtown station that was built in the park?
We currently have five people downtown.
Okay.
Out of the station. We have five currently in train as soon as they clear. The thought is to put another two downtown.
Okay, okay, that's great, that's wonderful, I didn't know it was like that. So, those are my overall things. I think, you know, we, we are an aging city in a lot of ways, and we need to sort of reinvest in, in our image and our resources for the community as we grow. So, those are all my comments and my rant for today. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. I do want to echo Mayor Protem's point regarding communications, and being able to really have a robust system of communications, that is often what we get in requests from residents, is just confusion about what's happening and explaining the process, when really it could just be a centralized system and just better knowledge of what's going on and, and getting that information out there. And a lot of it is like signage, for instance, so we've talked about that signage at the parks. Anytime we have big projects going on, putting good signs, we did that in the past with improved signs for Measure J, and we could go, it could go a long way with just explaining what those are and having quick things that we can be sending out to the public. Do we have any additional comments? Mayor Protem, go ahead.
Sorry, I see Kim Baker here, so I want to mention something about procurement, and I know later this week, we're going to have a couple more consent items for, for contracts with businesses that are not located even in the valley. And I think it is really important for our own economic development that we're doing procurement, we're actively marketing it to our local businesses. And most of our local businesses probably do not look at Planet Bids or the Desert Sun for jobs. And I think the idea that, that our procurement director, Kim Baker, came up with was to have fairs for the local business community, to educate them on the process, is something that I think would be of great benefit to our local businesses, but also to our own economic impact on the city. So, thank you for letting me, go on.
Sure. All right, so, seeing no further comments, I do want to thank our city manager and all of you here, just the majority of your staff, for all of your work on this. And I think what I heard here today, too, is that there is, where we did talk specifically about the budget and the budget needs for the next couple of, of years and the projects we want to see completed, but we also just heard a great example from Mayor Protem about all of the different possibilities there are in just looking at things a little bit differently, and, and how we communicate or gathering email addresses, for instance, from our, our businesses, really small things that could probably be achieved relatively quickly, and maybe, and I think administratively, and not necessarily stuff that has to come to council. But I really love these, these different ideas that we're, we're hearing, not just from Mayor Protem, but from all of the council, and wondering how we can kind of continue to make sure that those types of things are being considered and, and possibly getting a report back about some of them. We don't want to necessarily add, require council attention on things that don't need council attention, but, but do look into some of these ideas that, that we hear. But thank you all so much again, really, really appreciate all of your hard work, and at this point, we are going to take public comment for non-agenda items. Speakers will be given two minutes, and while city council appreciates your comments, we will not be able to respond at this time. Do we have any public comment? Okay. Mr. Zachary Daniel Stone.
All right, that's why I held it up, I thought you were going to cut my time, I think. I was like, watch out. All right, let's see, congrats on the airport logo, that's clutch, I'm glad you were able to nail that down, that's really good. I know the tribe's going to be really happy about that, that'll look great, because I know while I was there, they're looking at bringing in slot machines for the airport, so that'll be great, nice little entrance there. If you could ask the chairman why he actually terminated me, that'd be great. Oh, let's see, got a minute and 32 left. Oh, for the fire chief, hey. Where the library is at? I know you can read. Let's see, oh, thanks staff for the capital improvement program slide, that was a great data, as far as the visuals concerned, I was able to follow that one pretty well, so that's a, that's really nice, good to have people that can interpret data, be able to put it out visually. Did not sign an NDA with Agua Caliente, so anything you guys want to know about them, I am more than willing to talk about. I got a minute left, so I'll go ahead and pass you off.
Do you mind, excuse me, if you could please direct that to the city clerk? We take materials at the city clerk and not in this one.
Okay, got it, thank you. All right, so, what we got now is my last little part, which you guys were talking about the centralized locations and everything that's happening, actually with the city clerk's office today, had a printout of the calendar, it is not a very good calendar, and to get it, it only lists really this week, so for the rest of the weeks, for the month, it doesn't list anything as far as the meetings are concerned. So, I can leave that one with you, that came from your website, printed off today. So, that's one thing that is an example of something that could be put together, because I'm trying to find all the meetings, so I can show up at every single one of them and get public comment. So, the, that's something that we could look at, that's probably a really easy fix, especially considering that you guys are using my.
Thank you, your time is up. Happens quickly. All right, at this time, we will adjourn this current meeting, and our regularly scheduled city council meeting will be this Thursday, March 11th at 5:30 PM. I'm sorry, May, wow, May 11th. Easier times, March. May 11th, 5:30, thank you.